Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the work session of the American Council for the General Fund Budget. Today is April 1st, 2022. Up first on our agenda is the Berlin Fire Company in Berlin Emergency Medical Services. So we do have President David Fitzgerald and Chief RJ Rhodes here with us this evening.
Mayors, April 4th.
What did I say?
First.
I apologize. It's April Fool's Day, part two. It is April Fool's Day. Thank you, everybody.
How are you both this afternoon? Thank you for joining us.
Good night.
Good night. Thanks, sir.
Was this just sent over today?
This is the first time we've received it.
Yep, yep. We just finished it. We worked last night, so we'll like not talk about it.
Got you.
So getting the American Council's page for Sheriff President Paul and Fire Company. RJ Rhodes.
Thank you.
We'll start with Fire Company. That's the packet you have in front of you. We file the same format that we've done the last probably seven or eight years. So just a cover letter explaining that these are the fire rescue services for the next fiscal year, July 1st to June 30th of 2023. And again, that will continue to provide, propose, provide the services for fire and rescue. And approximately quarterly presentations show you that approximately 45% of the fire and rescue calls follow the town limits of the land. The fire rescue is volunteer-based with volunteers. We have three fire stations in the apparatus that some of you visited that we have. Our volunteers are certainly supplemented by the career staff that we have to speak about those or provide the emergency medical services. We've gone through the budget, and it does total more than last year by 96,145 hours. And we will go through the line items and speak with you about those. That equates to about $0.2 on the tax dollar from your assessment that's available online. The next page is the budget for FY 2223. And then I'd rather work off the third page if that's okay. In that far right column is the budget for the year, the first budget. So we always start with our revenue. Very pleased to report, as you can see, our donations have increased from what we budgeted over the last couple of years. So we appreciate the community's support. And those donations are correct donations that are mailed to Taylor Bank or they're given in somebody's memory. So we do appreciate community's support. Very valuable to keep the fire company operating. The next lineup is fundraisers. And you see, we've increased that revenue. COVID, the last couple of years, didn't have fundraisers. What we're doing for our fundraisers now, the main fundraisers are these Friday night carryout dinners. They seem to be successful. As I think I presented before, with our call value, our volunteers are going to over 400 fire and rescue calls a year. So we've tried to think of fundraisers that do not take all day or like the casino nights that take almost 17 hours from somebody getting there in the morning, setting out things at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. So these Friday night fundraisers have brought in revenue, but they've also been successful in volunteers showing up, participating, and only having to do this, you know, one Friday a month for several hours. You get there at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock, and we're out of there by 8:00 o'clock, you might. So it's manageable for the volunteers. Yep, we have to remember that as both the operations and administrative officers at the fire company, we have to be respectful of the volunteers' time. Control burns, they vary year to year depending on how the chief receives requests for burning. And with the environmental, he has a lot to make sure they comply before he can make that decision. Our state aid funds, they are based on a formula from the state of Maryland, and they're passed through both the county and the town. The county grant from the fire companies is listed that stays constant. Their county uses a tax formula base, a tax-based formula, and then they supplement it so it stays constant year to year. The town, you know how the budget works, with the town, we present it here, and then you have the revenues back in interest. So we get to our expenses and our utilities. We did raise those up budgetarily, $5,000. We heat with natural gas and propane gas. And then we are still, we have two areas, the headquarters and conference center that I inquired, you know, Mr. Fleetwood, you haven't had your utility work session yet, so we could, we don't know what those would be. So, you know, I would offer to you, I did put about $2,000 in there for a possible town water, sewer, or stormwater increase. So if that doesn't happen, as we always do, we would come back and revise that number. But I have, for planning purposes, planned on that possible increase because I know you discussed it. Building maintenance and repair, mostly, this is just repairs to the building, not capital improvements. We have service contracts on our equipment, and the vendors have told us, and we've got quotes, not all our quotes, because vendors are hesitant to quote us a year out, but the ones that we have that all shown a 5% to 7% increase, or they are putting some sort of fuel delivery charge on when we get clean supplies, what have you. We're seeing a delivery fee. So that's, that's why that is raised up again, $5,000. The insurance, that is our building insurance, vehicles and liability. We were told to estimate from volunteer firemen's insurance services about a 6% increase. The office supplies and computer maintenance, the reason that is double this year. We are in the process, as we do, we follow our vendors' recommendations for computer tablet replacements, all the tablets in the apparatus that are used for directions and other data where we use a replacement on those. And it's our regular cost of our maintenance contracts on our copiers and everything else that have just gone up every quote we get. It's more than it was last year. Professional fees, we kept those the same, Mr. Verge, that's mainly his weekly and monthly and quarterly and annual accounting. He doesn't feel he's going to be charging the fire company any more, so we left that at $10,000. Communications, we left that the same, the pages are going to go up slightly, but since we're on a big replacement schedule, we don't feel we would add some other costs. Fire prevention, we left the same. Apparatus maintenance, we raised that $10,000, but you can see the two historical numbers there. They were $10,000 above what we budgeted for two years. And again, when we got our DOT items on Friday, that's our Department of Transportation inspection, our pump test, those fees have gone up. Their travel time to come to us has also increased. The fuel, I don't think I need to lay into fuel. So fire police, again, anywhere we can, all of these calls, and you're probably hearing the same thing from your department directors, are laid outside vendors. So as you see, fire police did not increase. They will, they will be okay.
But how is that paid? Because this column, this column represents nine months of operation.
That is nine months with an asterisk next to it. So for example, utilities, we have not gotten the town utility bills, you know, they'll get mailed for March at some point.
My question was concerning the fire police.
The fire police, they've only spent $50 so far. We, we, as you see, other items, and another good one, Mr. Barrell, is the one below that fire equipment. We've only spent $32,000. As we presented before, we always wait, two reasons. We wait till the last quarter of the year before we start ordering these things.
Okay.
Because we never know if we're going to go over on something else, and a decision has to be made. Even though we need that thing, we're over budgeted. We don't, we don't have the funds. There's nowhere else to go to, so we have to deal with it. As well as, we don't get our revenue from you quartered, so we don't have the cash in the bank. And the biggest thing is our state aid funds, they never come till February. So our capital equipment and that fire equipment, the chief can't place that order so we don't violate the, that grant, that state aid funds. Those invoices come after that check is received.
So you're waiting till the last quarter?
Till the last quarter. So yes, sir. Yes, sir. Good question.
And you have a lot of gear on board.
So the fire police, yes, that fire equipment, that has gone up some. The chief has not changed his quality of his gear, just the pricing of the gear is going up. The chief.
The company we buy gear from, when they came down, they told us the budget is $600 to $700 increase next year per set. And that's just for the coat and pants. And I would tell you that the boots, we just placed an order for boots beginning of March, and they've already gone up $15 a pair. And that's from, I just ordered a set the other day versus ordering in March, and they've already increased. So everything, everything that we have is, have to have is going up in price.
And what's your turnover for gear? How often do you replace?
Every 10 years. The turnout here is only good for 10 years. It has to be replaced every 10 years. And we're averaging currently about 10 sets, 10 sets, about 10 sets of gear per year.
So it's on rotation.
With all the fire equipment, and I'm talking about, I call it the durable stuff, you know, clothing and your computers and all that, is there, and again, I have no idea, but within the realm of Fire Company Incorporated, the world for a moment, are there opportunities for any grant funding with that stuff?
For some stuff, yes, there are opportunities for grant funding. We've applied for grant funding this year for air packs. We're still awaiting word on that. And we've also applied for possible grant funding for replacing a piece of apparatus as well. So we are actively seeking some grants.
And then I'll just, again, one thing, what the chief said, on the 10 years, that is the maximum amount of time. So if you have an active firefighter who comes to every call, goes in the burning building every time, the chief will not get 10 years out of that gear. But that is the maximum amount of time. So he may have an active firefighter that gets gear every five years.
Participating inside of that.
And we've done other things to extend the life of the gear as well as safety. We have the washer and dryers there, so the gear is washed properly and dried. A second thing that may be coming to fruition, if the National Fire Protection Station, NFP, recommends, and they're only recommending, they're not regulatory, recommends that members that fight fire regularly have two sets of gear. So they are not taking a set home around their family, putting in their automobile because of the chemicals and stuff they get on the gear. Again, that's only a recommendation, but when something gets recommended like that, which is national, you pretty well need to try to implement that at some point.
And it's critical as well for the, for the career staff. They have a house fire or a fire at 8:00 in the morning, start of their shift, they have to wash that gear and get it dried and get it cleaned before it can be reused, and they're there for another 20, 22 hours.
The next lineup is physicals and gym. All of our members get a physical each year to make sure they are fit for duty. Those have increased. We have a physician, they come to the, to the station with their, all their medical equipment. And those who can't make that appointment for work or something else, go to their facility. So they have told me those, those are going to increase, the physicals. So that's driving physicals, that's breathing physicals, and just a general physical, even like for our fire police, to make sure they're physically fit to do the job, because this is strenuous. The fire equipment repairs, very similar, everybody would call it, and that these repairs are, again, some of our annual post-testing, annual air pack maintenance, that you've heard the chief talk about. All those prices that we have inquired have all, all increased. And we did, as the chief said, we have the grant out, and we've talked to you and the county about American Rescue Funds. If the grant doesn't come through for the air packs, but we may have another maintenance cycle on our air packs because they're due in September, and we don't hear about the grant, and we don't work with the town, county to purchase those, we will have another maintenance cycle, and that's going to go up. That alone is going to go up $3,000. Volunteer incentives, that's raised up some. That is what we provide our volunteers, you know, the clothing that we provide our volunteers so they can be identified, whether it's a polo shirt, t-shirts. We're trying to provide them that as an incentive to come. It's also our annual benefit. We do provide other things, special events. We post the County Fireman Association. Everybody takes a term of that, so that is an expense we have, but that is shared. Every fire company in county has that expense. So we did raise that $5,000, did some of the food costs on those, and we had those at event, that's, that's increasing. The cadets, you know, we left, left the same training. We did increase that some, the training cost. Again, when it goes to the control burns, the chiefs have to do certain things to the hundreds, they've got to buy supplies to make sure we're safe when we're doing that control burn. No capital, this is just the operating budget running. The next page, just as a summary sheet for you, just for the town, just shows you how the budget has run since early '08, the ups and downs, just for your historical dollars. So you have the ups and downs from this year, '08. We were, we were funded from FY '08, FY '12, it's $342,000 a year. And this year, we're aiming for Q21, $145,000. The next page, just so you have it as a reference, that's your, what I explained, each category is so if you get back home or what have you, you can understand what the categories are. And then we just provided a copy of the capital again. We're here to talk about operating, but we did include that, just so you have that handy again. The price, the pricing hasn't changed since November '21? So the, the pricing, when we apply for the grant, usually what, what happens when we apply for those, the vendor does put a contingency, and we are allowed to put contingency in for the grant. So that, that $440 is still a good number, as of now, will probably be good through September, for the September of 2022 this year, for the air packs, and we'll need to be done with the air compressors. When it passes September, then we're probably changing that number.
So I have a question about the county formula. I know we've been talking about increase, 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 which is definitely something that everybody's speaking, but when they do their formula, it looks like in the last several years, of course, everything's been the same straight across the board, but have you, have you guys visited already with them as far as this year for the, their, their contribu-, or the county grant? Because I mean, if everything else is increasing, my thought, and I hope, I'm looking for someone to be that if they're doing an actual formula, that their formula would show increase.
So the formula hasn't even got to the $250,000 hours, so they are supplementing that formula every year. It's three sets on the 1013. It's a formula on the tax dollar, but they haven't even got to $250,000. So they are still supplementing every year more than what the county charter says we should get. So they're already doing that.
Oh, so they were, so when they were doing the 250, they were going over and beyond.
Above, and they're still above the assessable.
So even now?
Yes. So they're, they're already doing more than they, the charter requires them to do.
Now, what, let me refresh my memory. The charter portion was done back in, what, '90?
I couldn't even tell you. I would say, I would say earlier than the '90s.
Yeah, I was thinking that it was done some time ago. Has that been adjusted recently?
Not recently. That charter has stayed, has stayed the same. But the numbers go up and down because the assessable base goes up and down, and the commissioners decided a few years ago, we will, we will put supplements in to get you to $250,000 because they feel that's, that's the minimum that we should get from the county.
Just a quick question. The, there's nothing on this sheet for debt service on Station 3, so is that completely?
So that, we fund that, that is paid down, that, that was funded from the out-of-town run funds, that's, that's the capital, that's why it's not on here. We took the capital off. I talked to Jeff last week, so we, the capital's not in here because the capital's detached.
And then on the top here, just so, for the town grant here, just so I'm clear, the $125, which was what this was for this year for fire, has been paid to you, correct?
We received the last quarter, we checked this quarter, right, the contract said.
Okay.
Yes, I'll, I'll pay.
So David, you're about $27,000 short in revenue between your budget and what you've collected for nine months. Do you anticipate getting any more revenue? You're short on $27,000 in revenue between your budget and what you've actually received for the nine months.
Yes, is that, that check, well, we still, we still have, yes, we still have a check. We will get square when the check comes for the state aid. That's, that's going to be, going to bring that up $10,000 or $12,000, and then we'll probably receive a few more donations, so.
So you may come out ahead in revenue?
We, we might, yeah, we could. And we will have, we will have a few, a little fundraisers. When I say fundraisers, we'll put the signs up for the parking, some of the town has events. Those vary. Sometimes we get 20 dollars for the whole weekend, other times we will get $300 or $400. So we will have some more fundraiser revenue.
And Dave, what I'm not seeing here is the balance sheet, which I think, according to our contract, you agreed to, so.
Yep, that, that comes with the quarterly report in April.
Okay.
Because again, that's why I had to put the asterisk there for the nine months because we don't have like all our bills. So that's why it's in April to get the full nine months, so your, what we turn you in is accurate.
The apparatus, that is, that is requested in its states that, that is for replacement. What happens to the items that are being replaced?
So you're referring to the actual large piece of apparatus, the fire truck? They are sold. Sometimes the vendor who is bidding to sell us a new fire truck may give us a cost trade-in, but most of the time, they're just advertised in publications, even Facebook now, and then we, we get sealed bids, and we try to take the best bid that we can.
And that is a current plan?
That's usually what we do. I don't see the fire company varying from that. We have, we have on occasion, if we get ridiculously low bids, like $2,000, $3,000, $4,000, $5,000, we have a company from, say, I will tell you, give you an example, Lieutenant Lawson from the police, his fire company in War, West Virginia, sent us a letter, we got bids in that were ridiculously low. So we, we sold that to them at that same price. And then many, many years ago, there was another fire company that we donated it to, and that is, in the industry, that's just a nice thing to do when a fire company's, we're getting rid of a 1975 truck, and they got a 1957. It's a, it's a nice thing to do.
The, the company in War, West Virginia, they're actually still running that as a front runner, front-run apparatus, and that's a 1977 fire truck.
So I get to guess the rules very per state? Because if you're not able to, to utilize a vehicle at age.
And, and it also depends on the primary purposes, so yes. Regulations change from state to state.
I just have one more comment, and I guess one more wish. I would have wished, when, when you had, had compiled all of these numbers, you would, you would include a column that says, what is budgeted now?
That is on there?
Yeah.
Yep, that is. Yeah, we give you a three-year. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I got my ears twisted, Dave.
It does get confusing when you start looking at fiscal years.
So up next, we'll discuss EMS?
We'll make sure we tip.
We'll just go ahead and say, I got a tip for you.
So this will be for the Emergency Medical Services Corporation, same fiscal year period, 50, approximately 57% of the Emergency Medical Services within town limits of Berlin. We have discussed with a couple members of the Mayor Council, Town Staff, and the Mayor, and I think you're aware of, last year, the Strategic Planning Committee made some recommendations about staffing throughout the county, and the county commissioners funded two additional personnel last year. And so we talked with some of the staff in Select American Council a few weeks ago about getting the other two additional staff. So the public knows, so what that'll do is there'll be four people at the firehouse career, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Two of those will be paramedics, and two will be EMTs. So, so why is that important? We have a lot of simultaneous calls, calls at the same time, calls that CPR, the two people can't handle. So that allows the public to be served quicker, with a more accurate response when these people are needed. These people, these personnel are also cross-trained in fire and rescue services. So as I mentioned earlier, they can supplement the fire and rescue when you hear the fire siren go, or we get to an accident scene, they know how to do fire and rescue services as well. So the cost of adding those two additional people is $125,000. That is all-inclusive, that is all their salary and benefits, and the uniform is everything that's needed to do that, with some funding to cover some of their shifts when they take off work, as much as we can. And until we go through one year, and they start accumulating time, then we'll know if we need funds for shift coverage and what have you. But last year, it was $115,000, and it went up almost immediately because we had to change our pay rates even countywide, $2 an hour to retain staff. We cannot pay staff at, you know, $15 an hour doing emergency work. They've got to make more of that, or they're not going to come work for us.
So Dave, let me just, I'm sorry, let me just stop you right there, because I want to, before I forget, my screen goes dark here, because I did a calculator here. And your, for the EMS under town grant, you have a total for the budget of FY '23 of $497,000.
So change.
And then for fire, you have $221,000, which is a total of, yeah, wait, $718,000 from the town. Is that, can you, can you verify or confirm?
We, we don't usually total the numbers together. I'll, I'll have to agree with your math.
Okay. Well, that's interesting. The point is, I believe that we're looking at, in the proposed budget, $400,000 plus $125,000. So your internal budgets here are a little higher.
They're higher than that, yes. We've been at flat funding, if you total the two together, and then what we've been doing year after year with that flat funding, and just getting that on some, the fires, you see, you get to the chart, we have to keep shifting more to EMS, so if we keep doing that, potentially the fire is going to be zero, because we always know the personnel costs are going to go up.
I just wanted to verify that.
So combine, combine what is being requested this year represents, you know, a $440,000 increase.
Again, I'm about to agree with the math because we don't total the two together.
You'd better mind agreeing with my math.
What's that?
But it looks like around $440,000.
Who was your number, Jack? When you totaled fire and EMS for the request for FY '23?
It was the $221,000 and the $497,000 came to $718,833.44.
And we granted last fiscal year $400,000, so about $318,000, give or take.
Well, let's take the final one. That would be, yeah, $318,33. So this year, we're proposing $525,000.
Yeah, so I just did the quick math. It is $190 above the $525,000. It is 100, 190 above 525.
I mean, I'm just doing quick math from my paper.
Okay.
My maths may not be right.
Well, it's 318 to 500, what it was last year. This number, the fire, the EMS number and the, and the fire number, combining them together.
So, I mean, I don't want to hold up your entire presentation, but that's something to definitely keep in mind.
And, and we're presenting, as you've heard from your department heads, I'm sure, you know, we're being very honest with you, showing exactly why the costs are coming up. Nothing's being purchased, it's all the costs that are being passed on to us. So, so we'll work off that page three again, if that's, if they want to, that seems to work well for everybody. So the revenue for EMS, we do receive some general donations. And that's usually when somebody passes away or they send in a letter thanking for good service, they'll send a check in. So that, so that's the donations. We did increase that over last year's budget based on what we've received so far this year. We hope the public continues to support us. Same for the annual donations, that's. And those two fluctuate, so I left that number the same because they're only $50 higher and we don't anticipate any more of those coming in. They, those come in in a rush. That's the mailer that everybody gets in November for each year. So November, December, January, we get flooded with those. We don't see, see many more of those come in unless somebody has a summer residence or something comes across the mail and decides to check. The EMS invoices, we did increase that based on what, what the revenue is trending so, so far. And that's because our call volumes come back up again. I don't want to say COVID is over, it's not over, but the, where nobody wanted to go anywhere, nobody would go to the hospital, nobody would call you when you're sick. We're back to, to a call volume that we saw pre-COVID, so those numbers can come back up. County grant, again, that's formula based. So it's based, but it, it's gone up because our call volume's going up. So that's why that's going up.
So this one isn't chartered, right? This wasn't a go-by-the-charter?
Nope, there is no charter, there is no charter. And this, they have been adjusting by COLAs, they've been adjusting by request. Last year, they put 115,000 on top of the, on top of the formula and they proposed, because they're same process of view, they proposed to keep that 115,000 in there for those two additional people.
So wait a minute, I, I want to make sure I'm clear. The county, you want four additional is the total number, right? The county pays for two and we're being asked to pay for two?
Nope, we've already hired the two last year, so they're there during the daytime. Now the two that the town proposed for the extra 125,000, that would round out the crews and we would have four people there 24 hours a day. So right now, our four people are only there during the day. So at night, you're waiting for volunteers again from the ambulants to come up and drive or if nobody's available, you're waiting for the next company to come if you happen to be the second emergency or we have a fire call going on at the same time where we need two ambulances like the accident the other night. We needed three or four ambulances, so two of ours and volunteer had help out and we don't have any more volunteers. So now you had to wait for shallow con and ocean ponds to come. So with the four people there, it also gives us the ability to split those crews, all three ambulances, that we can get out the door.
So four in the morning, four at night. I feel like my brain is stuck and it's probably because I'm sick. I mean, I'm not, I don't have to.
We all just jumped up.
So let's go back 35 steps. So four in the morning is already covered, right?
Four during the day from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, there are two paramedics and two EMTs there.
Right, and what we're looking to cover is evening as well. But I'm, I'm stuck on the part where I thought, I thought you just said the county's covering two of them and we're covering two, right?
If you, if you will allow the extra 125,000, we'll hire two more people and then there will be four people there 24 hours a day.
Got it, okay, that's what I thought I was hearing, but I didn't, okay.
So that budget number does include the 115,000 stipend. That's why you see, if you go all the way back to FY '20, you see that's why it's, it's jumped. The town grant posed the banking interest. And then you get to the medical supplies and the repetitive items, and I'm sorry, a few repetitive, but the medical supplies, that is the durable supplies, the Band-Aids, the oxygen, all that that gets used. And those costs have increased. So that's why that's gone up, 3,000 dollars. Same thing for office computer, those tablets on the ambulance will be replaced. And that's all of our office supplies and our computer maintenance. Professional fees, we did increase those a little bit more. There is some increased cost with some of the things we do with payroll with Mr. Burgy and double checking behind ADP and things like that. So he feels there'll be a slight increases. You see, we're already 700 hours over budget and I don't have his, won't have hit, I don't have his third quarter bill and I won't have his fourth quarter. So that, that has to go up. But if, but if you look back to 2021, it was 8,400 dollars. So we're not going out of whack, we're just going back to the FY '20 budget. The payroll costs, you see, the, the increase there is the two additional people, 125,000 and then 50,000 dollars increase there. That's the cost of living, the steps, the uniforms have gone up. We just place uniform orders like the chief said. For the fire company, same thing for EMS. EMS captain ordered all the shirts and stuff and was shocked when he got the, the pricing back, but they've got to wear, wear the uniforms.
Cost of living and steps, that's a salary increase for, for, for current employees?
For current, current employees. We, we have a step system.
Can you put a percentage?
Yep, I can.
On that?
I, I can. So we propose a 3% cost of living. And their steps are based on how long they've been there. If they're a newer employee, they get a 5% step. If they're a longer-term employee, they're going to get a 3% step.
So the steps, so that could be as much as eight?
So, so the newer people, yes, could get an 8% raise. The longer-term people would only get a 6% raise. And the, the very long-term people, they're only going to get a cost of living 3% because they're, they're stepped out, they're going through all their steps.
And you shift differential hooks as well?
We do not shift differential because they work 24/7. So we don't change any pay when we get started because they're very flexible.
So do you use the same step system as the state? Or is it?
We, we do not. We, we use a comparable system to what Ocean City and Ocean Pines use because that is our competition. So that's why it's front-loaded, the same thing Ocean City had to do. If you don't front-load your steps, the people are going to leave. So you have the higher steps in the beginning. As they long-term and they're making a little more money, they're not so concerned about the steps, they want to make sure they get their cost of living.
Can you share that with us? Just send that document over. Thank you.
And your, your professional fees, Dave? And I know times have changed, but if memory, if memory serves me right, there was at one point, I thought that Mr. Burgy was donating. That's not the case?
He, he does go right off you. Yep, this is, this is not a 100% bill. Yes, it would be much higher if he charged us for all the work that him and staff do, it would be much higher.
So what's the rest of this for then?
Well, he does, he doesn't give us everything for free, that's what I'm saying. He, he donates. If he does something, he may not charge, but if his staff is doing it, they've got to get paid, so he fills for that. So, you know, I go out there and talk to him Friday for two hours, talking about the budget, he's not writing that down for us, he's donating that.
But the professional fees that we see in FIRE and EMS are all Burgy's fees or there are other fees?
There's other fees in there. Joe Ward reviewing contracts, we have all of our maintenance contracts, especially if we get a new vendor, you know, he takes a peek at all those just because that's a pretty thing to do when we get a contractor, we get a change in a contract from somebody, we have him take a look at it.
And your ADP payroll fees?
ADP is in the career personnel line. So the next increase is training and a pile of God's on behalf of EMS captain, Cunningham. He's relatively new in Ocean City, started a new job, so this, this happens to be his shift work, he knew he doesn't want to earn his time right away. It's not, this isn't important, but again, he's a volunteer, so his job comes first. Those have increased. We have not done much in training, we back to FY '20, 21, it'd be 450 dollars, probably 1,400 hours this year. The CPR cards now alone are almost 50 dollars a piece. Our vendor does try to, or our instructor tries to give a little discount on them, but she doesn't have control of those either because they come from, you know, American Heart Association. The, the large jump for this is the staff has asked for some training props and what have you. This is something, I spoke with the EMS captain last night, that we can certainly look for grants or that type of thing even. Mr. Murray even looking to the Ocean City Paramedic Foundation to see if there's something. But it, it isn't our request because training, you know, our people, we want trained, highly trained EMTs and paramedics coming to them to give them.
We have a meeting in May, so we'll.
So, so that is an item that we could, we could address. It can't go all the way back to the 450 dollars because it won't even cover our CPR. You've already seen, we spent 1,442 this year. The volunteer stuff, that, that is the stipend that's provided to the volunteers. The ambulance calls take much longer than the fire calls, especially if you have to go to Salisbury, so we do provide a stipend for the volunteers. So that's what the volunteer incentives is. Also for like during EMS week, you know, we do cheer our staff to something on EMS week, you know, Subway or the Donuts or something. So the volunteer incentive really does two things, the stipend, the volunteers to go on the calls and the different EMS hospital needs. Building maintenance repair, that's very low. The building maintenance repair is, fire company, the building is, is titled, the fire company. These are minor old things that the staff may need in their kitchen because again, that's their home for 24 hours. So, and they need new dishes or they need a new frying pan, so that's, that's what these building under EMS. The medical equipment, repair, maintenance, those are all contract-based. So the biggest one is our heart monitors, which we brought and showed the staff the other week, the heart monitors, the structures, all the things that need to be annually inspected and maintained because of their medical equipment. We don't want the stretcher falling down with a patient on it, we want to make sure it's working, make sure the heart monitor's working, the breathing devices are working. Insurance, same thing here, they told us about a 6% increase in our medical, our practice liability and our vehicle insurance for ambulances. Fuel, again, don't have to explain that. Vehicle maintenance repaired, we've raised that 6,000 dollars and you can see by the nine-month expenditure, that's why we raised it. Vehicles are getting older, the oldest one's in 2015, so we are going to start seeing repairs, maintenance. Utilities, the utilities that the Emergency Medical Service Corporation pays for is a fax line because we get our emergency calls, printouts and stuff on the fax machine, so they pay for that because we have more EMS calls than we do fire calls. Communications is zero, I should really probably take that line totally out. That's the pagers and what have you provided by the fire company. New medical equipment, those are things that the EMS captain feels that, that we need to, to purchase. And the list he gave me, you know, is, we are doing inventories now, all that medical supplies and equipment is handwritten, spreadsheets or tally sheets, if you take something out and cross it off. They make devices that, it's an inventory system basically. So they'll be electronic and it may, it may, not, we don't have any, it's all secure, we don't have anything missing, but it may be able to give us some more efficiency in purchasing and looking to see trends. So maybe we could purchase more quantities instead of buying four boxes of gloves, we can look and say, oh, maybe it's prudent, this time we're here to buy and buy the case. You don't want to buy a lot of some medical supplies at expiration dates, so we don't go, go crazy with those. But that and the pediatric medication, there is a software that he's looking at, pediatric meds, don't want to talk over your head except for Mary Tyntel. When you work on children, those calls don't happen often and there's a lot of calculations on those medications. Our paramedics are certainly top-notch to do this, but this, this software to be on the ambulance and this, these devices do this very quickly for them on, on children.
You mean like dosages?
Dosages, dosages and, and things like that. And normal set of vital signs, what they are. I mean, again, we have top-notch current medical EMTs up there, but the stress of a child call kicks in to all of us, whether we have kids or not. And again, it's a lot of calculations and we carry more and more medications each year. So he thinks it's a tool that we should look at. So, and then.
Does it just do pediatrics or do you have it for adults as well?
I have to answer because I'm not the expert on it, but I think it's just pediatric.
I believe it's just the pediatric tool that he's looking at.
And then something that we don't, we don't have on the ambulances, and we have schools that are here in town, we don't have the medical tactical kits like the stop and bleed, the tourniquets and things like that. We have a very small quantity. So if unfortunately we have one of these events in town, we'd like, we'd like to put a few more on the ambulances and the, those aren't cheap either. The tourniquets are very expensive. I'm sure the chief they have, it's not to be kids, hopefully they have one for your, your officers. But we, we, we want to, EMS captain, you know, he's in charge of those operations and he feels we need a few more on those, especially with our schools here in town because they're lifesaving devices. And we hope we never use it. We hope we never use it. But it could also be for events here in town, so I say the schools, but we have a lot of cybersecurity to schools, churches, the community events here in town, God forbid somebody would drive a car through one of our events or do something else. These devices could be used to stop bleeding, do other things. And the other thing, part of that, part of that tactical stuff is the vest. We already have vests, bulletproof vests, if you will, protective vests. They're up for renewal, but one of the costs, when I say renewal, the plates need to be changed. But one of the cost-saving measures that he's come up with, send him credit for that, is instead of replacing them for all our staff, we'll get a universal size and we'll put two on each ambulance. So I applaud him for, for trying to look ahead as a cost-saving measure. So instead of replacing all them, we'll just buy eight, two for each ambulance and two extra spares because you could respond in like with the command vehicle, so we want to have, we want to have eight of those. So again, instead of having 16, I applaud him for, for thinking ahead.
These are under, under the new medical equipment, why?
Yep. So that's the inventory, the pediatric medication and the medical plates. And then the new ambulance, 30,000 dollars, it's just under the new ambulance category, that's our ambulance payment and that'll be our final, final payment. Now, don't think it's 30, I think it's 28,000 to change. But we get 30,000 dollars from the county, 10,000 dollars per ambulance. And we've asked that to go up to 15,000 per ambulance. Mr. Fleetwood called the other day and reviewed calculations of what money we need to be putting away for the ambulance. So it's made up here to 15 per ambulance, that would be 45 coming from the county and the town hopefully thinking ahead to be putting 45 away for when these ambulance is going to do. Just the summary sheet again, the EMS budget up, up and down over the years. Like you said, it is a large increase this year. I know the 125 you were, you were already planning for. Again, we just did work on these numbers, the chief, we were there last night, I was there till almost 11:30 last night. The chief was looking, EMS captain was crunching numbers and we were just getting last night stuff from our vendors on Friday afternoon. They actually were staying late emailing us.
So you know, my question is going to be, is, is there any update from the county and the meetings? I believe you said it was going to be this month?
So, so we'll have a meeting April to 20, end of, end of April, I think it's toward the last Thursday of the month. So we'll get an update from the commissioners. We did, Chief Bowers did present last week to the county commissioners on behalf of all the fire service and the strategic planning. Same, same, made same presentation similar here about all the operating costs going up and the 15,000 dollars for the ambulance changes from 10 to 15, as well as reminding that we would like to hear something soon on the American Rescue Funds. So Chief Bowers made that presentation. But we, we do meet monthly in the strategic planning, especially during budget time. We usually take a break in the summer.
So last Thursday of this month this year?
So, so it'll be toward the end of this month. So the one in March they, they discussed, I, I didn't attend because we were working on budget and they talked about apparatus this month. The topic is capital equipment and we'll go to buildings.
Are we anticipating like a response before budget season is over?
We, we would hope, it certainly, if you'd like to call your, your commissioners and ask, we, we appreciate that, but we, we've asked and we've talked to Mr. Young about the American Rescue Funds because they have publicly stated, commissioners, so they have publicly stated broadband and FIRE EMS is what their intention is, but have a specific number. I don't even have an estimated number.
So the $125,000, we have put that in our draft copy of the budget. You can look around the room, we've asked everybody to check in their pencils. We see where your numbers are coming in at roughly $300,000 and some change above what we gave last year. We understand that's been flat for a couple of years, but with, I mean, our budget is, is public. So you can see kind of where our math is. We're looking at with the tax rate unchanged, $143,000 or so in additional revenue. With that being said, we're saying and we're recognizing that the fire company does need an increase. And what we're saying is that 87% of that, we want to allocate to the fire company, potentially to fund those two additional personnel. But my question to the two of you is, should we be looking at redirecting that to cover operations for fire and EMS and maybe come back and explore the other two positions next year?
That's something we'd have to go back and look at. I understand the request, you know, puts four more cents on the tax dollar because I did the math, did math too. So, but those two, two people I can tell you from here, again, we'll go back and discuss it with our operational officers, of those two people, they're needed, they're needed. We give you those quarterly reports with the response times and to maintain those response times and serve the public, we need those four people 24 hours a day.
And we recognize that. The only thing is that when the, when we're looking at the gaps between your operations currently, we don't want to exaggerate that by funding two additional people. If we're only able to redirect $125,000 for operational purposes, what I would like to know from fire and EMS is whether that should be directed toward operations or whether that should be directed at the two personnel. We've also talked about wanting to help with the SCBA and wanting to help with the heart monitors. So we do want to help on the capital side a little bit as well. But when we're looking at only being able to allocate a certain amount, it'd be helpful to know where that priority is.
Yeah, we'll go back, the two of us can't make that decision. We'll go back with our employment committee and look at the personnel and the operational officers for EMS and if you can give us till mid next week, that'd be great.
I think that's reasonable. I don't know if anybody else has some additional questions.
One more question. Did Charlie Townsend up to 11:30 last night? No, he wasn't there. Charlie wasn't there. No, no, he was not. But, but you know, we'll say if I can, I know it's work session, we don't want to be here all night. But you know, we are having our banquet Saturday night and it's important to know about the volunteers and Charlie's one of them. Charlie Townsend, Joe Pluckcheck and Harry Trimble. Back in 2021, when we didn't have a banquet, 50 years, they have donated their time for 50 years to this community. And Charlie, Charlie still drives our fire trucks for us. He's still capable of doing that and does a lot of other things. He's our assistant chief engineer. So he's taking the apparatus for repair and things. So the volunteers mean a lot. I know this is a heavy ask, you know, put four more cents on the tax dollar. But if we have to go to pay staff down the road for even fire, that's going to be a heavier ask. So the volunteers, so you mentioned that, I want to give them a little shout out. We appreciate it. Three people, 50 years of service. It's very applaudable. We have many more. Everybody's important from a probation member to these 50-year people. But it'll be 51 years this year.
We have seen an influx of new volunteers. Hopefully that trend continues.
And that's why volunteer incentive line item, I get asked about that sometimes. That's why I explained to you it's banquet. You've got to incentivize the people to come to the fire company. And then you've got to give them incentive to stay. They have the tax, income tax attraction from the state where they can take off their versinco. The county has a length of service award program that we're working on revamping. So they get those funds earlier than waiting 25 years out. And then little things that we can do with the fire company and provide them during safe equipment, T-shirts, things like that. But you know, we want to make sure they're safe. That's the main thing too. Make sure that when they come volunteer, they don't have a concern that's going to affect their livelihood and their regular income if they did get injured or something at the fire station. More on to see. Thank you for bringing that up.
How many conducts do you have?
About 10.
Dave, earlier on you said you applied for two grants, one, was it one for the heart monitors?
No, so we have the two, AFG Grant System firefighter grants, thus the SCBA and apparatus. And then we've talked to some foundations about the heart monitors. And most of them start through their budget cycle here in the spring into the summer. So we have asked, and then your idea of trying to do a capital campaign to the public, that's certainly on the table, trying to wait for some of these foundations to reply to some answers. Thank you so much.
Thank you both.
Thank you all. Thank you both.
Cheryl, sorry, can I get copies of those electronically? Oh, okay. I just figured they're easy to file if we need to come back.
Not all want to electronic files, so you probably best just see them.
And next time if you have it ahead of time, sort of, I could get it.
Yeah, well, we actually, we're just finishing up that 12:30 today. Because I'll wait for more. I want it to be as accurate as possible. Thank you. Thank you.
So agenda item number two is a statement from the mayor. I do want to thank our department heads for compiling the, or helping with our compilation of the FY '23 draft budget. I also want to thank all the staff for meeting with us, council members for attending some of those meetings as well to discuss some of these preliminary requests. The budget that you have before you this evening, as our finance director will get into, is the department head request with I think the only additional item or the cap, or the request that we made for FY '23 for Worcester County. And then we removed the salary increases and put that down at agenda item number seven for us to discuss and look, and the one-time payments. Outside of that, there are two items here that are funded by ARPA. My recommendation to the group is going to be as we go through the discussions, I know some of you have some ideas about how we can spend some of that ARPA money. What my suggestion will be is that we pull those entirely out of the budget and have a clear path for everybody to be able to see exactly where we're spending the ARPA money and then they can always be reinput into the FY '23 budget. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to our finance director Natalie Slay for an overview of the general fund records.
Good evening. Welcome to our fiscal '23 budget work session for general fund. In your report, I'm just going to go over the main sources of revenues and then we're going to proceed to each department individually. So reports that you have received for the packet and currently have with you in the paper copies have extra additional revenues since I have recalculated from the original, I have received several confirmation on the estimated amounts for the revenues. And the change that we have made for the revenues, we have deleted, they have, we named a half of in lieu of tax for the electric fund as we proceeded to decrease it from last year. So that 92,249 was decreased to zero. That basically goes away as reimbursement from the electric fund to the general fund for the property taxes calculations. The real property tax is stated at current rate. So the estimated revenues projected to be received at 3.9 million. That will give us additional 144,000 or a 4% increase for the real estate property. Corporate tax is the taxes received from equipment, property taxes of the businesses in within the town of Berlin. The estimated revenues to be received is 190, just looking at the current rates and the current receipts for that revenue item. We went up a little bit by 20,000 for the projections for fiscal '23. Public utility taxes, those are the taxes received from the companies that operate communications and also utilities in within the town of Berlin. And looking at the amounts that projected for prior year, actual amounts and what we are right now for fiscal '22, we suggest we estimate it at 115,000. Rural tax, I'm budgeting for a little increase, just looking at the numbers that we received so far and projected for potential future growth and attendance for the area. We were at zero for fiscal '22 for admission tax. There were some repayments for the prior assessments, but going forward, we've completed that repayment and we are estimated to receive $6,200 for admission tax. Those taxes received from amusement and admissions for events that are not within the main district of Main Street and places that conduct live music or sale of tickets, we get a percent from the state back to us. State income tax, by looking at the receipts so far and receiving the letter with projected increase, there are currently some recalculations on taxes from 2019 and 2020 going forward. The estimated revenues would be at 400,000. Increase in the penalties and interest, those amounts coming from basically delinquencies on the real estate property taxes receipts that come in from the county is part of the whole entire revenue projections. I have met with Dave Engelhardt and we've gone through all of the planning department revenues, building planning, building permits, sign permits, miscellaneous permits. They are not so far from what we've budgeted. The only thing, I want to highlight a couple of them. Sign permit went down by $500 just from the estimate what will be projected to receive in fiscal '23. I do have an allocation from ARPA grant for the suggested capital projects for the police model radials and strategic plan for growth up here. We can go either way, as mayor suggested, we can remove the capital projects completely from the budget and we can remove the ARPA grant completely from the budget. Then if we go to discussion further down into the year and decide to fund those projects by the ARPA monies, we would have to do a budget amendment to insert them back on the budget. So it's, it's totally up to you to decide. I would suggest to you, if we plan in to complete those projects, especially those specific items, to leave it as it is. And if we decide to add additional capital projects going forward, then we can do the budget amendment.
Can we do, some places do like the capital, and when I say places, I mean municipalities, they'll do like a capital budget. Can we do a supplemental like ARPA budget? That way it's easy for people to see, these are the revenues that came in, these are the expenditures, even if it's broken down on a separate sheet?
We can insert in our capital details that goes posted on our website, additional line or additional spreadsheet. Sure, it's not a problem, but we're not separating the ARPA funds as a separate fund. We are spreading them along all of the funds.
I just, what I would like to do is make sure that it's easy for people to see. And we can talk about the best format to do that, but just to make sure that it's easy for people to see, okay, this is what the town of Berlin received and this is how we went through and allocated this fund.
That would come further in the discussion when we decide the ARPA allocations. Highway user revenues, normally we do budget the low estimated to be received. We go in with the full amount. The letter that we received stated 232,000 to be received, so budgeted at 230. State police aid, this is one annual grant, the amount went down due to the increases. It calculates accordingly to the capital and operational costs annually. So the estimated amount I receive from the confirmation from the state grant. Slots revenues estimated to be the same as current budget. I'm hoping we will receive a little bit elevated number than that so we can close the, or get the police building and proceed with allocation of that to future purposes. County grant as requested by mayor in front of the commissioners was $663. And the additional grants for Flower Street Roundabout of 122,000. You see it in the little details underneath the total amount. And if you go to page two, Rails to Trails of 76,000. And unrestricted worst to county grant is annual, we receive is 465 is unchanged.
And those, those projects, so where you see the 465, we typically allocate that to police, fire and EMS. And then the 122 that you see for the roundabout and the 76,000 that you see for the Rails to Trails, if those are not partially funded by the county, those will be removed. They're half cost as to the total amount that would be needed. And just so that we're clear, Rails to Trails is the phase two. So they funded phase one this fiscal year. We're asking for them to help us complete that project for phase two. And then the roundabout will be a two-year phase as well. And this is just for the engineering design and some of the easements that would be needed.
So as of right now, on the capital part of it, to offset those revenues, the capital projects, as they are, are the same cost. So if the cost is estimated to be higher, we will need to readjust the numbers later.
And you would see the change for the bike ways part. If you look up on page one with the revenues, 01, 4001, 3241, that's where, like what Natalie's saying, it's zero right this moment, but you would see that proportioned share for the grant that we would apply for there. And it's 25% that's our obligation. We split that in half with the county. And then the Flower Street Roundabout portion, we can discuss the possible ways to be able to fund that 122. I think since a portion of that, and we can get to that in a moment, is exacerbated by the development of Ocean's East, that maybe some obligation from the impact fees would be wise to offset some of that.
Make page of two, I just want to note here that general fund contribution for overhead from the other utility funds will be recalculated and adjusted, adjusted on the later days once we go through the utility funds. Right now I'm leaving them as is for just projections and for the purposes of this report. The reimbursement that you see down to the page is for the bonds that being transferred from electric to the general fund very many years ago. And there's a percent of reimbursement that continuously being budgeted back to the general fund until those paid in full. Impact fees, the calculations withheld of Dave Engelhardt been done and he's projected to see 50 residential units, which calculated at 2,000 for impact fees, totaling 100,000 for fiscal '23. Commercial impact fees is 35 units at 1,000 for 35 units. Those are offset for the capital impact fees improvement. So it's basically neutral impact on the budget. They're committed revenues for future projects. Interest earned is our basically investment and bank interest increasing just by looking at what we have so far at the 34,000 is the current amount, budgeting the same pretty much amount for 35,000 for next year. Going to the page three, parks integration grant is the same scenario for the parks. If the grant will be received, the, we'll proceed with the capital improvements. So far I don't have a number for contribution from sewer or stone water as repayment for the utility farms. Once we go through the utility funds, some possible amounts could be placed back to the general fund. Current amounts, 30, 10 from the sewer and 20 from the stone water. That would be probably beneficial to discuss during the fees increases and see how the funds will perform going forward. There is no so far a impact fee transfer because we, I didn't have a good feel if we're, will be looking into the impact fee. Current budget have 168,000, which is a transfer from, to support the public work streets project. County liquor board, this amount been confirmed by the phone call to the county. That is a percent from the liquor license application renewal from the local businesses. So with that said, general fund revenues totaled to be 7,542,000 as of total right now.
Thank you. Now, any projected change with the highway user revenues with the gas tax holiday? Do you think that'll impact us at all?
I don't have any projections. I'm not sure. I'm hoping it's not going to be a big decrease, but I'm just, we'll have a small impact on that.
Are you still confident with the 230,000?
I am still because the, the bill that they passed for additional revenue contribution- I am still, because the bill that they passed for additional revenue contributions, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that will support if the tax continues to be, as an exemption for a couple of months.
And then the other thing is that the phase out of the in lieu tax, thank you for making that change, we'll see that as additional revenue or money that can be expended in the electric utility, correct?
It's not revenue per se, it's going to be a neutral effect, but it's not going to be an additional expense. So it's potentially the expenditures could be allocated to the other operational cost of the electric.
Thank you. Any questions for our finance director relative to the revenue items that were discussed? All right. If not, then let's, if you don't mind moving on to just a review of the deficit, please.
So currently, what you have in front of you is the budget, as Mayor mentioned, I have received a request March the 29th to reevaluate the budget we have and remove the requested salary increases in one time pay, an additional $120,000 per company funding, and reduce the $92,000 from the in lieu tax. Originally, as you have seen in February from our meetings, we have a budget, as department had requested, with 462, to be exact, 462,000 in deficit by reprojecting, reevaluating the revenues and removing the increases for the personnel cost, adding the fire company, and removing the taxes for the electric department. We have a current unbalanced budget of a deficit with a deficit of $280,107. So if we take into consideration the additional funding for the fire company, the delta for deficit is $155,000. That number is very doable if we go in for the step above or incremental step for the taxes, or if we consider the combination of impact fee advances, potential ARPA funding, and if we're placing back the increases for personnel, that would be a combination of the both as well, the tax increase, impact fees, and the ARPA to close this gap.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the deficit so far? We can come back and revisit that as we get through with our departments as well. All right. So up next is agenda item number five, an operational review by the town administrator.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening to all, excuse me. The FY '23 budget process has been a long and time-consuming process. At this point, we still have a long ways to go. We started the process at the end of 2021 and then really got focused in January of '22. Everyone at the staff level and the elected official level understands this very important process. One thing that has been learned through the process this year is the unprecedented increases in cost of just doing our, our business. And I may note that costs continue to rise. We have shared time and time again, the unbelievable cost of, of things to just do our jobs, and these costs again continue to grow. Our general fund capital needs have been discussed during a budget workshop. Our capital is aging just like our infrastructure, things wear out. When things wear out, you get into a number of concerns. Their functionality, safety, and can we do our job with what we have? I want everyone to know that we have learned to work together. We can reach out to another department and use their equipment if needed. We also reach out to other organizations and borrow their equipment if needed to do our jobs. Over the past 12 years, I've been employed with this organization and I can state with the utmost respect that our paid staff of this town are professionals in what they do. We all, while we all respect the balance of power and the checks and balances, we also know and hope, that you know, that staff has the interests of the citizens and the elected body on their minds when they do their jobs. We strive to deliver the best we can. We also share that we've heard time and time again, that we need to push something off to the next year. We know the past three years have been good years financially for the town. On June 30 of 2019, the general fund had a $16,000 in the unrestricted fund balance. Then on June 30 of '20, we had one, a little over $1 million in the unrestricted fund balance. And then this past June, we had $2.9 million in the unrestricted balance. We just moved $1.9 million through reserves after we established a much-needed general fund reserve policy, and we have another $1 million sitting in unassigned. My question is, and has been and remains, will it get any better? When will it get better? I think we're doing pretty good. I, I think we have executed our financial plans well, and the proof is in the, in the year-end results, year-end results over the past couple of years. We went from $16,000 to $2.9 million. While we're moving in the right direction, we must stay the course, where we not only maintain, but we grow. A year ago, this council had a conversation, again, I'm not encouraging this, or I'm not condoning this, that there should be an incremental tax increase. I ask of you to please keep this in your minds in your decision. As the town administrator for the town of Berlin, I ask for all of us to take a deep breath and let's think about the big picture. Employees are the number one resource of this town, but this number one resource also needs the things to do their jobs. We also want to be competitive with our surrounding employers. I want everyone to know that I fully support the department heads and the initial draft in the FY '23 budget that was published on February 16 of calendar year 2022. I ask all to remember that no one from staff has treated this process lightly, and I understand the implications of a budget. I also ask for everyone to learn, learn from the expertise of our employee group. The proof that we, Mayor and council and department heads, as leadership of this organization, have done well for our employee group, is the longevity and the lack of turnover. We are all to be commended for this. What we have in front of us this evening is our second draft of the FY '23 budget. Current revenue projections are at $7 million. While this is a conservative projection, this number could go up or could go down. The same holds true for expenditures. Second draft shows a $280,000 deficit. We have a few options, options to balance this second draft. Raise taxes, use ARPA monies, use impact fees, service or personnel cuts, and an option of the combination of these things. We employ 43 full-time employees in the general fund. There are millions of dollars of infrastructure and equipment within the general fund. We have a highly respected police department that is led by a well-qualified chief. We have a finance customer service department that has made incredible strides and improvements over the last three years. We need to take a step back and look at our economic development department. Two employees who do an incredible amount of work to support the overall mission of the town of Berlin, and they operate under the leadership of Ivy. A little side humor, I was told some 12 years ago by Ivy's predecessor, Michael Day, that the main responsibility of economic development was herding wild cats. I assure you, 12 years later, I fully understand that now, okay? But I do now, our planning department continues to provide the day-to-day planning and zoning oversight. Both Dave and Carolyn continue to work to serve the public and any developer with down to our service. Public works, this department continues to improve. These employees under the leadership of Jimmy Charles takes pride in their day-to-day work with sanitation, street maintenance, and parks. I know we are seeing continued positive results. And then there's the administrative staff of the town. Mary Bolden is a walking textbook of knowledge and does a fantastic job with our parks. Hands down, Kelsey Jensen does one of the most important roles in the town, that's to make sure we all get paid, okay? My message is short, we have a well-qualified leadership team that does a great job with what resources that you have provided us. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next are department budget requests, and we'll start with elected officials, which begins on page four. If you look down this budget, I'll draw your attention to line item 01, 5,056, which is cell phones. You'll notice that there's a marginal increase here, we brought that to seven units, so that includes the elected officials plus the one staff member that does work in elected officials. You'll see just below that, line item 01, 5,056, 20 dues and publications, that's been increased by $40. That is because Maryland Mayor's Association dues are going up by $40. Working our way down, you'll notice expenditure 01, 5,570, which is office supplies, there's been a change there. Councilmember Nura, I believe you picked out that there may be a discrepancy in this, and I think there may be a slight issue here as well. This is supposed to bring hold to the $1,750 figure from FY '22 and show an increase of $1,970, which is a laptop for the mayor's office. This expenditure was postponed last year. I believe that should bring the expenditure line item to $3,720. So if you don't mind, we'll have to make that adjustment.
What was that number, Mayor?
$3,720. You can check the math, it should be $1,750 plus $1,970, I got $3,720. And then in subsequent years, you'll notice that that'll go, that'll go back down, and then we have a computer that I think to do for, oh, what would it be? Not '23, not '24, we would have another computer doing '25, I believe, for Jolans. So any questions regarding the elected officials expenditures? You'll notice, I think our employee training is still the same amount it provides for everybody to be able to attend the summer conference in Ocean City. And then the special appropriations is typically in the elected officials' budget, but that's used for like when we send flowers or cards on behalf of the town. All right.
Why is the, why is the laptop only being considered for the mayor's office when we have a council of five that, that finds it necessary to use our own equipment to, to for town use?
So this is a precedent that was set previously, the previous mayor did have a laptop, some of the duties of the mayor is to be able to access Tyler's financials, pre and edit some proformations and stuff. So there are, we tried last fiscal year when the computer was removed, to be able to make do, there are some operational impacts that do occur with not being in the town's computer network. So this year, I am requesting that we do fund that $1,900, $970 expenditure. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, it does, but, but it's, the fact still remains, we all find it necessary to, to utilize our own personal and private technology for, for town use. You not feel that, that, that should be a consideration also?
So the trouble becomes that there are certain things, the way that our security is set up, that it's very, very difficult to be able to access. Also, some programs that I just do not have access to. And being the chief executive as defined by the charter and having to access those documents, it does create some implications with operations.
I understand that, but I just want to make the point and have it on record, that, that, that the council also has a need for town-supported technology, and I'm not requesting that. I just want it out there.
And I, I agree with you also, and I think that when we start looking at the need for being able to access certain things, I do think that, I mean, I've been in that role too. So I think that it becomes challenging sometimes to be able to do the role that we're expected to fulfill without having access to some of the network stuff. So the council believes that that could be helpful. I think that phasing in some of that technology might be a good thing, actually.
Zach, what is the reason for fully funding cell phones when several kinds of people don't take advantage of that?
So there are some that take advantage of it and some that don't. So what I figured for this fiscal year budget is that you would put the amount in that's needed. We don't know who's going to need it and who doesn't, because anybody can apply for that at any time. So it's better to have it in there, just like across the board with staff. We fund that at a level for everyone. Some take advantage of it, some do not. I think it's prudent to have it in there in the event that somebody requests it, because we have to, we have to plan to complete fiscal year out, so. Any other questions? Now, I do recall that we discussed the National League of Cities and membership of that as well, and then a couple other, I think, a couple other things that we're in for possibly employee training, but in an effort to comply with the tax rate, those are not in here this year.
Yeah, they're not, they're not necessary.
Those have been, those have been taken off the wish list. All right. So let's move on. Up next is administration, and we'll have Jeff Lee with the town administrator running point on that.
Good evening. I want to do just a real quick overview, because it affects all departments. When I say all, general fund and enterprise, and Kelsey, please join in. Healthcare, employee health insurance, line 4505, I'm talking across the board. The numbers right now are, we originally had budgeted a 12% increase. Right now, the latest as of closing business today at 5:00, we've got it down to 6%. I think we might go a little bit better, but I'm pleased with, I'm pleased where we're at. Chris, I hope you didn't hear that, but.
No, we're not.
I, I, I'm pleased with that. Workers' compensation, we got our initial number today, 6%?
It was about six and a half, which I, I can't recall what we budgeted in here, five?
Five.
So that's a preliminary number, there still may be credits that can apply towards that, but I just got the call today around 4:30 saying approximately 6 and a half percent right now.
So that, that's across the board. And then liability insurance, and I'm bringing everything here, line 5210 for all departments, that's our liability insurance, and you'll see roughly the 5% bump on that. Kelsey and I will be in attendance Thursday with Legit, and we'll have a better feel on Thursday for that, but I feel very comfortable with, with the 5%.
That is a renewal workshop in Keevere, so Jeff and I will be there all day on Thursday.
So in, in department 5100 administration, there are four, four full-time employees, myself, Mary, Kelsey, and David Gaskell Esquire. So there's, there's four full-time folks. Highlights, highlights in this department, if you slide down to contracted services, you can see where we spend money for Code Red, our engineering services, grant application services, new code, the public access channel. Hopefully, hopefully, before the end of FY '22 and then continuing into '23, we'll get some shredding done, and then a small $250 Zoom license. Next page, please. And then D3, website hosting and new code on the web. Phone, internet, really no change there. Travel, no change. Cell phone, no change. Dues and publication, that went up a little bit again because some of these organizations have gone up. And then in turn, what I wish to share with the mayor and council, Kelsey Jensen, who's pretty much full bore now with, with the HR duties, I've encouraged her to seek her Society of Human Resources Management professional certification. So there is a requirement, obviously, to pay for that. And then, again, we have the dues and the fees that we pay for Kelsey's ability to maintain her town clerkship. I guess that would be the right term.
Certifiedness.
There you go. And then Mr. Sam Cardz in the back, he, it appears that we're going to go up a little bit on, on the IT side. Let's see what else. Slow down on me. And if you won't, go to the next page, go to page eight.
Just back up just a moment, Jeff. I know we talked about it early in the part of the meeting, but just so that everybody sees where that line item is, 01, 5100, 5608 for fire and EMS allocation. That has been moved from 400 to 525, representing $125,000.
Yes. Page eight. I have no idea what those first 12 lines are. It's like, it's like Tim Lawrence talking to me. Same card, no different. Same card, no different, okay? We did increase vehicle fuel across the board, and that's pretty much it for administration. Questions?
Well, let's explain also, item oh one, fifty-one hundred, fifty-six seventy-six, special appropriations. You'll see that that's a twenty thousand dollar expenditure. That is for Atlantic General Hospital. The town of Berlin did pledge a hundred thousand dollars over five years, so you see that last remaining pledge item there for FY twenty-three. And then we'll take any questions for the town administrator or any, I know some of you, and I do want to thank you, I forgot to say this earlier, sent over supplemental ideas as far as how we can adjust the budget. So as we tackle each one of those sections, let's just go ahead and discuss those if we can. I can't recall, was there anything in administration for either of the proposals?
What I was, what I was going to suggest is, since we have them available for the screening, to just kind of tidy it up at the end.
Okay, we can do that, that's fine. All right, so then if there are no questions for administration, let's move on to finance and customer service with our finance director, Natalie Slick.
Finance department budget, you have the details on page nine. Finance department consists of three employees. The originally requested department budget represented ten percent increase in one time paid for three employees of five hundred dollars at the holiday time. That's been removed from the budget for this work session. Professional services, there is an increase of three thousand dollars. It's an estimated cost for a single audit for our money that we have received. We will need to have a special, excuse me, separate audit performed by because of company going forward for, I guess for several years, because we have till twenty twenty-three to extend, ten years. Contracted services, we have ADP process and payroll and random drug testing. Travel, I am requested participation in the National JFWA Conference, since this year was not available to participate. And the reasoning for the Maryland JFWA, it still have the available resources, but some conferences through the year vary not particular to what we're doing in the town of Berlin. I believe that JFWA has very valuable sources, communications, and networking that will benefit us in the future for budget process and financials. Cell phone allowance at the same level for three people. Dues and publications include the membership for the Maryland JFWA and JFWA memberships. For the employee training, the level been increased a little bit to present participation in the Tyler online courses and also the JFWA conference. And office supplies being decreased just for miscellaneous items, and because we are not changing any computers for finance. If you don't have questions for finance department, I'd like to move to the customer service accounts.
I just want to clarify, before we move forward, when we talk about salaries, and I think it's just predominantly salaries, they haven't been removed from the budget, they will be on item number seven, and they're presented in a holistic view on a half percent increment, so that the council can make a informed decision regarding that. Thank you. They're not in the tally, but they're broken out. Go ahead, customer service on page eleven.
Page eleven, customer service. We have three employees that are present here. Going into contracted services, very similar, support for ADP, random drug testing. We have a little bit for the outside contractors, and we have Tyler support and Tyler online bill to the customer service, primarily because customer service department is reimbursed eighty percent by the utility funds and twenty percent remains in the general fund. It's an expense line item in administration. No increase on the rental office equipment. We utilize a vendor who provides the leases and rental equipment for copiers and the printers. Toastage is slight increase, just foreseeing an increase in the cost of postage going forward of eighteen hundred dollars, so the budget for fiscal twenty-three is estimated at thirty thousand. Cell phone trial one changed. If we go to page twelve, the items for informational technologies, there is an increase due to several items, and I think Mary will be discussing that later, or as the total package, or should I go over?
You can, you can, you can.
There's an actual part, complete service agreement at thirty-six thousand. I'm just going to go with the big items. Microsoft subscription, three hundred and sixty-five licenses, with thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-four. Regular professional services for informational technology and other vendors of fifty-six hundred. And warranty and miscellaneous items, which will require sixty-four thousand overall for fiscal twenty-three's respects. So the office supplies is the next line item that you see. It seems like a big number, but that's a centralized expenditure line item for the general fund and the customer service, where all of the papers and supplies have been ordered, and then because the customer service gets picked up as reimbursement, it's allocated by the consent act utilities. Printing is a slight increase, just the nature of the increase in business. We're printing, we're purchasing envelopes and bills that be printed on paper, that page is printed that we have to pay for. I'm estimated for that expense to go up just by evaluating both the fiscal twenty-one being closed and the amount, and due to delinquency and COVID pandemic, I'm thinking that's going to be close to fifteen thousand dollars. Credit card fees, a slight increase of three thousand dollars due to the nature that so many people utilize an online services and in the utility deals taxes, and we have options to pay other services as implemented for at the customer service desk and online, just for the convenience, people utilizing more times to credit card concessions than in person cash.
So regarding expenditure oh one, fifty-one twenty-five, fifty-seven eighty, that debt expense, do you believe that this increase is associated with COVID?
Well, it's a combination. Some people are moving out of the area, if they're renters and short-term renters, and they're basically living the balance behind sometimes, that we would have to submit to collections. Also, there is several things in place when we consider either submission to collection or write-off permanently, because there is no reason to opt for this particularly. So it's a combination of things.
Thank you.
Natalie, so in theory, I know you have reported out that slowly transitioning to electronic billing.
Yes.
So some of this is going to go down as far as the general, like envelopes and whatnot?
Well, the only thing would be is printed, because we ordering our bills, outsourcing our bills. The information that printed on the back of the bill has to be placed, and we order that probably thousands. So hopefully with the e-billing, I would print it possible.
As well as, we should see a change on page eleven with oh one, fifty-one twenty-five, fifty-six oh one postage.
That too. But I'm just thinking that the actual postage per postage.
And I think it's smart to, although we're looking at some operational changes, they could potentially save money, I think speculating that nobody's going to change is probably okay for right now, and we'll see where those historical numbers will come in. Any additional questions for customer accounts?
So in terms of credit card fees, and I had mentioned this to you before, Natalie, about charging the convenience fee, the credit card, which would reduce these fees we have to pay significantly. Is that something worth looking into?
Well, we had asked that question also during the budget meetings, but were we able to give any, I know that there were some of those charges that were still up in the air about what we could carve out and what that would look like.
So the convenience fee placed in on the consumer for going online and paying with the credit card would be like a fixed cost edit, because we utilizing a third-party processor between Tyler and credit cards. So there is a fee, flat fee, that we pay out, we have to Tyler for that. We discussed that in between the staff, and it's kind of a combination of things. If you look at the necessity of paying the bill online, electricity and water considered as a necessity, wasting a fee or paying online, it's an extra fee. So the decision will be made to go forward, that we would like to pass it on to the residents, it's definitely doable. We just have to, we include it as a separate discussion going forward.
And I can't recall if we talked about this and what the answer was, but if it's the credit card processing, do we pay that fee in-house if somebody walks in to swipe a credit card, or if they pay online?
So there is two separate fees. There is a credit card processing fee that gets charged by the credit card company, such as ERMS, et cetera. And there is also a convenience fee that we pay to Tyler for a person to access online data, view the bill, and also pay online.
But when we do that payment downstairs, we don't get that convenience fee?
No, we don't do any fees right now.
Credit card.
The credit card, we cover the cost of the credit card and the fees as well.
You said, did you say late fees?
No, no.
Oh, I thought you said credit card and then late fees.
And fees, convenience.
Got it, got it.
Can you send over what that, those exactly, what the processing fee is in the percentage, and what the convenience fee is, just so that we all have that, so that we have an idea of what the, if you don't mind. And then, do you have like a historical volume for each month of, that you could share with us also?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so up next is building and grounds, and that's going to be handled by our town administrator, Jeff Fleetwood.
I'm all right. So anyway, building and ground, what is that? That's pretty much everything that completes the maintenance for town hall, the economic development building, and the planning building. So when you take a look at this, in line fifty-one thirty, fifty-two hundred, contracted services, elevator inspection, that's something that, just to give you a little history, about two years ago, there was no charge with the state of Maryland on that. You'd call them up, they'd send somebody out, they'd get done, they'd give you a little certificate, you hang it, and life's good. Now, we're paying for it, so.
Now you have to pay someone to do it and someone to watch it.
Yes. You've got to have a maintenance guy, but you've got to have an inspector who certifies the maintenance guy.
Yeah.
I've never seen anything like it in my life. Fire, protective services, that's our fire extinguishers. Janitorial services, that's the labor and the material for public restrooms, all of our restrooms within town hall and the planning building. The town hall brick repair, that is a conservative guess of what I think it's going to cost. If you want to see what I'm talking about, if you get time one day when the weather's decent, which it appears that way, the outside wall here, take a look at it. The brick is deteriorating, and we had worked like this done four or five years ago. It was a long days when these guys were here, because they actually chisel out the remainder of a brick, and they slide one in and they re-point it, so it's a tedious process. But this side of the building is, it needs help. We added in for FY twenty-three, outdoor security cameras for town hall to capture the public restrooms on the outside, and then the parking lot out back. If we drop down to the bottom, line fifty-one thirty, fifty-two fifty-five, you can see the rails-to-trails money, and then you'll also see forty thousand dollars in there for town hall entrance renovation. And one of the things that the mayor is, we've entertained, is potentially changing the locks on all the doors in the building. And I just got a quote today, we just got that today, Mayor.
From James?
Yes.
And we've got a couple others too, so let us know if that's.
This is the, this is the one I got today, is the better of the prices that I have, and it's about a twenty-six thousand dollar expense to change the locks on the doors.
Is that just town hall?
That's town hall, planning, and economic development.
I mean, but just to, but just to put that into perspective, we're not changing locks like what you see here. It would be digital, and that is one of the findings that we did have from the critical infrastructure security folks, is that it is a little bit more secure for protecting critical government services. So something to consider.
Do we need badges?
It would be badge swiped in, and it would be a key part of each office, and including the council changes. So, yeah, much different, they just change the locks.
Go back to the cost.
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand to badge it up for the entire workforce?
For the workforce and for town hall planning zoning and economic development. Now, that project can also be phased. I'm sure we can send those breakdowns as well to everybody for doing town hall and then working our way through.
Jeff, I just remind you that it's over ten thousand, it's going to have to be sealed in.
Correct.
For the budget.
Thank you.
And that, that concludes building and grounds.
Thank you. Now, looking at building and grounds quickly, page thirteen, let's go to the top of the sheet, expenditure oh one, fifty-one thirty, fifty-two hundred, and we look at town hall brick repair. We had that at three thousand originally. Do you think five thousand, I know you say it's conservative, but where did we come in last time with the brick repair?
The last time around, we spent off in five thousand dollars.
And this is a little bit more intense?
A little bit more, but the reality is it's concentrated, so you're not jumping from here to here to here.
So if we were looking at possible changes to that, should we expect it to double? Should we expect it to go up a thousand, or is it a coin toss?
To be honest, coin toss.
Is it the entire wall?
No, you need, you need to look at it to truly appreciate the result.
We'll back, we'll back up.
It's pretty much all, this wall here, it's not the whole wall. It's the whole length of the wall, but then you also got to work in the alley. You might have to get on other structures, because we only own two feet or whatever. I have to stand on some buildings, you know, we had ladders, so it's not like out here where we could just get a crane, a lift, so.
We can hire children, Mike can squeeze in there.
That violates all, all other sets of laws. Okay, so councilmember Nichols, you have a question?
Yeah, is there something, but thinking about this, it's like, I don't know that you can't compare home to what we do here, but is there some, I don't know, source, some outlet you could reach out to, get some grant funding or something for this? I mean, this building is old enough, that's in some category.
So to answer some of your questions, we used part of the Economic and Community Development's facade grant to replace the windows, which were equally as vital, but a much higher expenditure. I think it's important that we don't erode all of that grant and leave, like what we have, at least half of that for the business community?
No, I hear what you're saying as far as that, but I'm not saying, and I understand that we have the facade grant, but is there another supplement? That's what I'm asking for, because I mean, in my head, I'm thinking, anyway, there's got.
How old is town hall?
Oh.
Define oh.
No, when I say oh, I'm talking like seventy-five, eighty. Yes, I'm thinking we might be there.
In this district, there's a variety of grant options that town could apply.
See, I mean, I might be sick, but I figured there was some.
Can we maybe take a look at what some of those would be and reevaluate whether we can target some of those expenses?
And can we also see if that can work towards the revamping or whatever it is we're trying to do downstairs?
So we applied for that through a community legacy grant last year with Department of Housing and Community Development, and they were this close to giving us that grant, but we got the strategic demolition grant instead, and I don't think it would be too fair to allocate, you know, close to a million dollars to the town of Berlin for both projects. So we chose which one was the higher priority and. So we chose which one was the higher priority, and we received the $500,000 demo grant. But we did apply for a whole complete re-renovation of the old police department.
Can I tell you from past experience with historic district grants, and it's been a while.
Maybe different now. Police area.
But their grant process can be pretty arduous, so if you're looking at an expense of about $5,000, the juice might not be worth the squeeze, so that's something to consider.
Oh, we, we could potentially reapply for like what I was talking about, because that is a much higher expense.
I mean, if you could get more than $5,000 out of it, I say squeeze that down.
Well, no, we were, I forget the value of the grant, a lot of that was an elevator and some reworking of.
Yeah, that was a whole different.
Yeah, that was a, what, $400,000?
Well, no, we didn't include the elevator, I mean, for the, for the police.
Correct.
The police area that we were going to renovate.
Yes.
It was for, I mean, there's, there's mold in that building, and we were going to turn the progress to.
Thanks, Chief.
Into a community meeting room, and it was going to cut to Town Hall, there's going to be a couple of offices in there, but it was mostly for the community because hence the grant is called Community Legacy Grant.
Thank you, any questions or any further questions regarding building and grounds? All right, so let's move on to our Chief of Police, Arnold Dowling.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
I, I know that we're gonna look at salaries a little later on, but I want to go ahead and just speak to that real quick. We're definitely gonna go ahead, because of the manpower shortage, we're gonna go ahead and blow out this year the overtime budget, and that's one reason why we have an increase there. And looking at the full-time salaries, I would, you know, proper to say that everyone surrounding us has actually got a raise last year. We asked the Board of Education if they got a raise last year, they will be able to tell us. We talked to the state, someone will be able to go ahead and tell us what they actually got. And our 1.5 versus the counties, 2.5 for cost of living, and 2.5 for the staff, actually pushes, because they have the same person here, and the same person there, and the same person there, that all work under general fund. And those people with our low floor are just moving far out of their head. They plan to do the same exact thing, a 2.5 for cost of living, and a possibility of even going higher this year county-wise. So again, we just want to keep in mind that if we have to stay where we are, we're just gonna go farther back and farther back, and we won't be able to catch up on that.
And if I may chime in, two years ago, three years ago, when did we do the nine? Three years ago.
Tenth by 21, I think, or was it 20?
It was, it was at least three years ago, we came before the council and the mayor. Berlin Police Department was, for the lower shore, was next to last on police salaries. We came in, I did a nine percent across the board, that moved them up to the middle tiers, I call it. But as of March or April the 4th of 2022, it's a revolving door, guess where the Berlin Police Department sits now with salaries? Dead last.
But hold on one second, what you shared with me is that once we upped ours to nine percent.
It's a revolving door, Mayor.
It literally went, and then municipalities around the area and others around the area went right back up.
But the end result is.
And again, if you go ahead and just look at the availability of officers, Wacomco just had a hiring process, they had 12 people they thought were gonna come in, they ended up not having a process. So again, state police went ahead and just jumped up over $10,000 for officers, so we're competing. And we're talking to Tim now, Tim is competing against VPLL and Job Tank. Those folks got raises and raises because of the business that they're in. And on his side, 1.5 is, you know, again, they're pushing them back, pushing them back. So we're just talking about the competition, we just wanna, when we get to seven, to make sure we look at that and understand where we are as an employee group compared to our surrounding. And again, Ocean City's ready to do collective bargaining, have a big jump, and we're all competing for the same people. Next step, we're actually looking at Contractive Services. It is about 42%, and that would include the one-time cost for the actual study, and we're actually looking at Leops as being the big cost increase there. I'm not gonna go over any of them that are actually at the zeros, if you want me to come back, go ahead and come back and look at them. We'll jump all the way to capital, and we had a decrease of 25%. That was really 50% because we did also get a grant for another $24,000 in that line. Vehicle maintenance is an increase of 6.7, just cost of doing business is what's added there. Dues of publications, slight increase of $75, but it is increased on that line. Informational technology is 25% increase on that, and that's the increased cost of code maintenance. And again, the cost of doing services with some of these computers that we had the license for free, and now we're in a cycle that we actually have to pay for them. Vehicle fuel, raise that 25%, and we're hoping that amount will cover. Clothing purchase, increase of $1,000 is 25. We know that we're gonna have to hire new people, and that means actually new clothing, and that's actually gonna increase that line. And those are the actual increases that we have on the lines themselves. If you want any more detail on any lines, I'll be able to go ahead and speak to those right now.
I just had a quick question, Chief, about the vehicle.
525255.
Is it, is that grant optionable?
No, no, and.
Which is a word I just made up by coincidence.
That was an arguer's process, to say the least.
Now, while we're on the topic of the vehicle, we recognize that you do have a capital replacement schedule for your vehicles, and with the cost of vehicles the way that they are now, have you explored or are there any other options? I know we're starting to see some of the cars coming back across some of the agencies, and then we have some of the smaller SUVs. Is there any way we could adjust the fleet a little bit to, to make the expenditure a little bit more manageable this fiscal year?
I will come back and say that because they're actually in contract, we're actually looking at a Tahoe that is normally priced at 52, we're getting it 34.
Yeah, I know, we're gonna go shopping with them.
We're actually, they're talking about it being cheaper than Explorer and a lot of other vehicles. Our vehicles are a bigger, big vehicle for a reason, to hold certain equipment and the safety of our officers. When you have that much equipment inside of a vehicle, once you have a crash, you have a crash pattern. If it comes back with a small car with a computer here, with a camera here, where do you think it's going? So when Officer Sergeant O'Connor had his accident, was T-boned at Bay Street 113, if he was driving in an actual sedan, we're talking about the Malibu, he wouldn't be here with us today. So again, Mike Hitman was in that same similar situation with Worcester County. Neither one of them are back to work, but they're both alive. So again, that's the reason, safety over top of, you know, the cost themselves, but the cost isn't that much difference. So if you go ahead and find me a vehicle that's in the 30-plus range, that's giving you this service, you know, then I'll say, yes, it's a cost difference, but I don't see it.
Yeah, well, no, I didn't, I mean, I, I didn't have an issue with the request, I just wanted to know if it was grant, if you could get a grant for it.
Sergeant, Sergeant O'Connor was in a Ford Explorer, or what was it?
In a Tahoe, in a brand-new Tahoe.
I thought it was in the Ford.
Hold on, he was in a brand-new Tahoe.
We don't need to stress the brand new.
No, no, this is even better, he was in a brand-new Tahoe, and we end up getting more insurance money than what we paid for.
That's right.
Now, the, the other side of this is, when we're looking at the $45,000 expenditure, last year we acquired two, but what was the, I understand that the gap between the $34,000 and the $45,000 is probably the equipment?
It is equipment.
The, what was the base price of the vehicle last year when we purchased? Was it around the same $34,000?
The two last year were four-wheel drive, because that's all that were available, they were 37.
Okay, so we're actually looking at a two-wheel drive with a little less.
Two-wheel drives are actually the pursuit vehicles.
Okay.
So, and they're generally cheaper than the fleet vehicles.
So, but what I'm asking is, we're not really seeing a huge increase in the base price of the vehicle.
No.
Okay, and that's where I thought we were at with the higher $45,000 cost.
It's, we were advised not to go ahead and split it all up because it is something that will be with the life of the vehicle, so they had to put all the equipment with it, and that was a smart way to go ahead and do it, and it's for, come on, what's that word? Depreciation.
We're gonna make an accounting out of it. Perfect. All right, any other questions for our, well, actually, I have one more question. We were talking earlier on the top of page 14 about staffing. I know some agencies in the area are using public safety officers that are not fully sworn officers, and then some places also have some retired officers that they bring on, bring back on. Is there anything we could do to help adjust some of our staffing to help overcome the shortages that we have?
If we're talking about putting someone on the road, it wouldn't be a prudent thing, safety would be more of the issue for us. If you're large like Ocean City, what you would do is, especially during the summer, when I was on the boardwalk, you would stand on the boardwalk, look, and you'll see another officer. So in between, you can go ahead and have PSAs or other people because you have someone right there. When we have one person working, they go to Salisbury, and then you have one of these cadets, aides, or whatever you want to call them, working alone, it's not something we would even think about doing.
So, and some of the public safety, when you say PSAs, we're talking about public safety officers, just for everybody else, but the public safety officers, sometimes those are like a roving position as well in Ocean City. And would there be any way that we could adjust some of that demand, like for downtown or lower-level calls for service?
And again, I would say, we have to have bicycles, and again, our thought is this, and you don't see them right now, we have to have a certain staffing to go ahead and have someone riding a bicycle downtown, because again, if the other officer goes somewhere, they need assistance or it's another call. It's very difficult to go ahead and go back to your vehicle and go somewhere. So it all comes back to a safety thought and process. We have to have the manpower to go ahead and get to a point where we can do some of these things. We've actually had interns, and what, that is actually labor-intensive on us. So Ocean City does a whole program, and they have training officers, that's all they do, to go ahead and put those people out there with the best training, and again, they have full-time people right there to them, like that's what.
What about, rather than bringing in the new lower-level recruits, what happens, and I believe I see them sometimes in like police cars, not just on like bikes and stuff, but it's clearly labeled that that's a public safety officer. Now, what about bringing in like some retirees that could maybe assist, that would have some of that police training, maybe we adjust their level of potential response in town, but to help augment and adjust for some of our staffing needs?
I will go back with the PSAs, they don't ride any large vehicles with any emergency equipment, they can't. But on, on this side with retirees, we would love to, guess who's taking all the retirees? DSP is up there paying a big dollar to go ahead and bring anybody from any state to go ahead and sit in their schools, no uniform. Sheriff's Office, they're at every one of the schools in the county. Where else? They're all in the courthouse, they can't find them right now. So again, we'll be competing against them, and the likelihood of us getting them, especially, you know, in a certain climate, it, it'll be a difficult process.
I think our labor, labor market, when we look across the board, is gonna be what it's gonna be for some of our areas, we're all competing for a similar supply of labor, and then when you further specify that they have to be like credentials, whether it's electric or whether it's police, I think that further inhibits who we can attack for the hiring pool, so we're gonna have to think a little.
And we're thinking, if you talk about Anarundel, 20-year retirement, the guys are coming out 42-years-old, you think they want to go to bed? They're coming across the water, you know, finding jobs, sheriff's office, other places, but again, if they have a place where they know they can get a second retirement, they're flocking here. We get phone calls, wants to hear what we're paying, what our retirement is, they just hang the phone up. So again, that's our thought, that we have to go ahead and up there fight for the ones that are working at Anarundel County and those places that are retired, plus some people that are Tyler Salisbury, that want to come over here, and those sort of things. And I'm sorry, Chief, don't, but those are the things we're actually talking about. Some of those places were 12-hour shifts, and they just go and go and go, and when we come here, it's called beach. So again, we can go ahead and sell something in a different way than they do, we're talking about second life or second career.
I just think it's gonna, I mean, not to belabor the point, I think it's gonna be very difficult for us to compete with some of the numbers that people are able to associate salary-wise when we look at size and available funds that we have here in the town of Berlin. So, I mean, I empathize with the fact that we are short-staffed in many of our departments, but.
Well, I think Tim will be able to go ahead and speak to it when he comes, it's not only about us hiring people, it's about keeping the people we have.
But I mean, we're down several officers, and when people dial, I mean, much like the fire company, when people dial 911, not that we don't expect a certain level of service with our other departments, but it's usually a critical moment where they expect somebody to be there, so.
I can tell you in Ocean City that they primarily hire these PSAs just to walk the boardwalk, they sign several segments of blocks, and they always walk in pairs for safety reasons. And, you know, they're there to help with the masses of people there, you know, to answer questions, possibly write a small citation, but always in pairs, so that's.
But they've also, like Chief said, my husband's Nana was a PSA in Ocean City forever, until she died, but when Nana was a PSA, like Chief said, she was partnered with Dorothy, but a half a block over was their officer, you know what I mean? And then a half a block or two blocks to the other way, she could radio another officer, so it's not like, even if we got five dozen PSAs or two dozen, we don't have enough paid officers to manpower or supervise these PSAs through Main Street Berlin or wherever they tend to go in our jurisdiction. Is that true?
In 1985, I was hired by Ocean City, five summers, three of them were PSA. I did booking, and I wrote tickets, and I'm telling you, I didn't write any ticket where I didn't see another officer, you know, right there. It's very unique in their situation, you don't see that sort of thing in Salisbury for a reason.
All right, any other questions for our Chief of Police? All right, let's move on to our Public Works Director, Jimmy Charter. We're picking up on page.
19.
19, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I will, I will just go right down here to capital layout of 53, 5255. That is actually the. That was, there was a pickup in there from last year, which is still in order, and then I have the concrete pad in there with the oil separator, and then the fleet maintenance tracking program, which is, again, that's with five users, and that'll let, eliminate repair costs. It'll estimate on repair costs, it'll track the cost of repairs, and it'll be able to track the serviceability of all of the vehicles that are all in this, and that's heavy-duty equipment too, that's 10 trucks, big 20, 10 and a maximum dump trucks and all that, it'll all fit in that program. Continue down to slight increase in travel, which is conferences and employee, funding through, where I purchase things from employees, anything to that is part of the travel. Cell phone stays the same. Dues and publications on 53, second page is 5620, the diesel laptops, annual subscription, and that, that dialyzes, that announces the codes on each of the trucks that Bob has the ability to diagnose what repairs are needed for the vehicles.
And Jimmy, if you don't mind, just elaborating, because there are sizable percentages that we've grouped at from the other sanitation and what else was the streets?
Right.
Just so that everybody's aware.
We go to, uh, we go to fifty-three, fifty-six, twenty-one. Uh, we added a CDL class. Now, the state of Maryland is requiring that all CDL drivers go through the class at like Warwick or other, uh, registered classes to serve, to becoming a CDL driver. Now mandatory to take this class.
It's mandatory, you say?
Yes, before you could just, before we could do it in-house, Jimmy's probably had a couple of guys that actually, we trained in-house. We take them to DMV, they get their license.
And it's not the state of Maryland, it's a federal motor carrier. It's the federal legal in that. It was supposed to be implemented, uh, four years ago, two thousand and, or nine, two thousand eighteen, they delayed it two years. And then when COVID hit, they delayed it until February the seventh of twenty-twenty-two.
So this twenty-eight hundred dollars that's allocated, that's to cover your whole workforce?
No, it's just, if we would hire someone in that didn't have a CDL.
Gotcha.
But we would want to him, yes, they would want to have someone, um, so we had one to get their CDL.
And of your eight, eight employees, how many currently have CDL?
Six of the eight employees do.
Right, so you're pretty much covered there with the rest of the staff, yeah.
I did reach out to Worcester County to see if they had anyone in-house that would be willing to do that training for our, um, CDL drivers and they said that they did not and they were hoping that State Highway may be able to assist them with that. So I asked if you get a positive response from State Highway, please pass it along. So, um, otherwise it have to be done through Dell Tech or, um, Warwick is what we've found to be the best options around here, so.
Uh, we'll continue on to fifty-three hundred, fifty-seven hundred. Two of the lap, two of the computers, I think are up through cards to be replaced this year to laptops. That's why there's an increase there. Fifty-three, fifty-seven, thirty is the same. And then, um, of safety supplies is we installed two new, uh, first aid kits, boxes that were, we didn't have them in the shop. So we got two new first aid kits, have updated bandages and all the, um, supplies we need. And we got one in the shop and one in Bob's shop. And then this year, we're possibly looking at adding any more safety features that we need to upgrade in the department.
Here's how to ask you guys a question about this stop bleed thing that was mentioned earlier. It just came to my mind just then. So when we buy this thing and I, and I thought about it just now, and I'm trying to take a few times, sorry. But with this kit that the fire department mentioned, you guys have it, the police department does?
Talking about tourniquets?
Yeah, yeah, we do. And that's just a triangle bandage, the triangle thing, correct? Am I wrong? Tell me what this is. Explain this thing to me here.
It's for wound packing, tourniquets, like the chief mentioned. It's, it's a kit that actually has a lot of stuff. So what it's designed for is if, uh, some, multiple traumas in one particular place, the idea is to stop the bleeding, uh, that's life-threatening.
So, first responder. This is a, this is a first responder kind of thing, right?
Yeah.
Is this something, I'm sorry, because I don't think that you meant that when you were talking about your safety thing, but it came to my head just now and it popped out of my mouth. Is this something that can receive some kind of funding to purchase as well?
We, we got our free.
Thanks.
But now, the, the one difference, I think, is that the first aid kits that Jimmy's talking about are pre-done like boxes.
No, 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 I, I get that, I get that.
And we, and we, and we have to pay for them. We're just talking about the tourniquets.
No, I was not, yeah, I was talking to stop bleed thing. Jimmy, I wasn't taking away from your budget, dude, it wasn't. But the stop bleed came to my mind just now when we were talking budget, so. Got it.
Thank you. Jimmy, anything else?
Uh, we'll move into sanitation.
Uh, well, hold on one second. Uh, I just want to point out that, let's see, I get this one. So on page nineteen, under capital out of equipment, oh-one, fifty-three hundred, fifty-two, fifty-five. You said the pickup truck that was requested, previous draft, uh, has been removed because that was actually on order for FY twenty-two, correct?
Well, I just meant there was a decrease, that was in last year's budget, it was thirty thousand.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
So a decrease this year, just in, um, public works, was the two items.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
And the truck's been on order for eight months?
Yeah. The, the next thing is, is page twenty, uh, under oh-one, fifty-three hundred, fifty-seven hundred, office supplies. Here, as Jimmy mentioned, you'll see the two laptops. They are a little bit more expensive than a desktop computer, if you recall from last year. Uh, we are trying to transition as much as we can to the laptops, just because one thing we did realize with COVID was that there was, uh, an impact to our operations as well as both of those, uh, positions, the director and superintendent being mobile, so. Thank you. So we can move on to sanitation on page twenty-two.
Sanitation, uh, we still have the safety, no change there, contracted services. Uh, we did have to increase our landfill. We're seeing a higher volume in that throughout the community. And, uh, some of that even could be, uh, go back to when we eliminated the single screen. Maybe more residents are putting items out into the trash that we were able, that we were still paying for, just in a different way.
Now, while we're on that, with the increased volume of trash, uh, with that being said, are we noticing any impact with our recycling efforts? Are we seeing a higher volume of recyclables or is that staying?
We are seeing a higher volume and, um, but we don't get charged for that. But there's a higher volume in, um, in pickup. But I think some of that too, though, we're still fighting the, what's recyclable to compare to what's not recyclable that still gets put in there.
Do you think any of this pressure that we're seeing with the increased volume is a result of more people being at home?
I would say a lot of that is, you have more people staying at home. They're still coming off of COVID, even though, not lately, it's the talk of the town, but like, you still have a lot more people working from home and we're still seeing, um, a higher volume of trash, so.
Thank you.
Well, what haven't we, I mean, in the last year, how many new, how many new residents or townhouses or apartments could be added to town? That could that have, I mean, how many were added between our budgets last year and this year that could have also increased your volume? I know that you don't know that number, but I'm saying that's.
How many, how many single-family dwellings have we seen in the last twelve months?
Homes or apartments? Homes or apartments?
Both, both.
Right.
Well, single-family homes, eight. And apartments, but we don't pick up there.
We don't pick up Ocean's East.
I think one of the main reasons is there was maybe some vacant homes or second homes that were probably sold. And over the last year, I bet we took, say, fifty cans to places that we weren't picking up before. Not to put you on the spot, but across the street from you, we added a can there, correct?
Yeah, yeah, my daughter did buy those, yes, she did.
That's a great thing, it's a beauty. So that's, I think, the buying tragedy and, uh, picked up.
I know.
To, uh, move on to fifty-two, fifty-seven. Uh, if we go down to, we'll go back to fifty, fifty-three, ten, fifty-two, fifty-one. Here's what we're talking about, our increases in, uh, oils, our DEF, which is, uh, used in diesel trucks. A prime example of the DEF, the blue DEF that we use. Last year, it was a hundred and thirty-nine dollars for a fifty-five gallon drum. This year, it's two hundred and nineteen dollars for the same fifty-five gallon drum. That's a fuel additive for the diesel. And oil and hydraulic oil is going up on them prices too. Vehicle maintenance, uh, we're always trying to keep our equipment and tools up to date so we can work on the trucks. Uh, we had a breakage about two weeks ago. Bob was able to fix it within a couple of hours and we were back out, finished the routing on that. We go on to the next page, page twenty-three. Vehicle fuel, we're running three trucks, we have a, we have an automated truck, we have a recycle truck and we have a rear-loaded trash truck. So our vehicle, our fuel expenditures are really high right now. And that is, uh, all I have in sanitation.
I mean, questions for Jimmy for sanitation? All right, let's move on to streets if you don't mind.
Uh, salaries, we have five full-time employees.
You have four and you're searching for one.
Searching, correct.
You have five positions.
Five positions. Uh, we go down to contracted services, which are, um, there's a slight increase with just the DOT physicals and drug testing and. We go to fifty-three, twenty, fifty-two, fifty-one.
What are we seeing as a change in cost? Can you give us those figures for what we're seeing in a change of cost for DOT physicals in FY twenty-three to FY twenty-three, please?
There's, there's eighty dollars.
There was a change.
They've always been eighty dollars.
And what vendor are we using?
We use, um, West Ocean City and Hurry and Wellness.
Thank you.
Uh, we go to fifty, fifty-three, twenty, fifty-two, fifty-one, equipment maintenance. Again, this is where we're seeing, um, in, increase in street, street equipment maintenance. This is mowers and tractors, oil filters, oil filters. In the past, Bob informed me like, to do a oil change on a tractor, it was roughly like a hundred and forty-nine dollars. Now it's a hundred and ninety-three dollars. Filters are higher, oil is higher and parts, just parts is more difficult. Uh, street repairs has went up too, um, and we're seeing this too. In fifty-three, twenty, fifty-two, fifty-two, mulch is going up in price. Uh, crushing stone is going up eight dollars a ton, per ton. Patch is going up into our capital layout of fifty-three, twenty, fifty-two, fifty-five. The streets are in this category, Elizabeth Street, Ashland, Schofield. And we also have, uh, the strip, we treat pot, uh, sidewalk, which is a safety issue because we have people walking in the streets. We go to the top one, we have, uh, we're, did you bring this picture up? Here we go to the one, the next picture. Tobacco, it's out of date, it needs hydraulic system. Uh, let's see, the major hydraulic system is leaking. It needs a full overhaul of the system, which is probably thousands of dollars really to have it repaired.
What year is this one?
This is a two thousand seven John Deere tractor, backhoe. Uh, it cuts off intermittently while driving or operating, so sometimes you're going down the road and it just shuts off. And that's not good. Uh, it's been to the John Deere for repairs numerous times and they said they can't fix it. That's why we're asking for a new backhoe this year. Uh, F-two-fifty, we're asking for another pickup, traded in. If, um, the pickup we have, it's a two thousand three Ford pickup with over a hundred thousand miles. Uh, it's the one down here in the bottom left. And this is the door rocker panel here, it's all rusted out, cab mounts are rusted out. There's a hole in the floor, so when you're driving down the street, you can hear the air coming through the floor. And then again, six-wheel dump. And then here, we're asking for a dump truck too this year, a new six-wheel dump truck. We were going to trade in two trucks at the Public Works Division. Could you bring that one more picture up, sorry?
Which one, this?
One more. The top left truck, which was informed this year of plow and snow that they were smelling some fumes inside the cab. So that's something we want. And, um, that truck is no longer, has discontinued truck from GM. Parts are very hard to find, very expensive. It has, uh, has, has a non-reparable P, air leak, PTO pump and transmission lines are rusted, corroded and not available to purchase to replace them on that, on the top left truck. The second truck we're looking to do two-for-one is the GMC fifteen-hundred. That's also a two thousand GMC pickup on the top right. It has rusted out rocker panels and foreboards and the body that's holding the bed on, when you lift it up, it's very teared when it's. And that's why we're trying to, um, trade out equipment to get new equipment.
Tony, are you still here?
Yeah.
As an operator for this equipment, what are your thoughts?
We need new stuff.
Right, and this is the truck we drive, isn't it?
That's the truck?
Yeah, I knew that, I knew that truck.
That's the one I saw there, yes. Wasn't that small?
And when you get that, when you're lifting up the salt, that bays.
The bed starts rocking and you throw that truck from the tip over.
Oh, my God.
So. And then, uh, and then the last item is, uh, two thousand seven John Deere grass cutter, which has over three thousand hours. The deck is rusted out, which I still pictured that. That's rusted like four or five places on the deck. We're just hoping to get through this year with that piece of equipment too.
And that bottom right picture, if you take a look at it, that's the, uh, the rocker panel.
Rocker panel, the pickup truck on the left. That is all that is, sounds a little, well, the Roundabout is in there too. I don't know, continue on.
But this Roundabout, you don't get the, this is, this is.
Dependent on county funding.
This is a ghost item.
Tell me the reason behind it.
It is, just sitting there, ghost.
Well, uh, one is the concerns, so the question was the reasoning behind the Roundabout. Uh, we all feel a lot of, uh, feedback regarding speed on Flower Street. I, I believe that's been exacerbated by, uh, Ocean's East. And then when we look at potentially what could be coming as well, uh, down closer to the, the middle and the high school. I think we're looking, but when I say that, I mean this potential sports complex. I think that Flower Street receives a abundant amount of bus traffic, given a lot of car vehicular traffic. It's getting more traffic trying to, uh, skirt, uh, backups on Route fifty. So this Roundabout is really designed to help slow people down and to increase the safety within the Flower Street neighborhood.
I guess the question that I always had about the Roundabout is its exact location and if it falls within. I mean, I, I see what you say as far as what the proposal was, but thinking about what we just discussed just now, technically, that's the county, right?
No, that's the towns, that's the towns, uh, road and actually, they're all town roads, so.
So the entire road from its start, well, only it's all to the end?
It's going up, set the bridge.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about. But the portion that we're just talking about right now, I guess you mean the traffic coming from those places heading westward towards us.
Either direction because people, despite the way of them not trying to be able to come down Flower Street from Ocean's East, people know how to get around.
With all due respect, I know, I know. They, they skirt like they, boom, seventy miles, five miles, I do.
So the actual location is where?
It would be right by the church, so it would be Flower, Schofield, Branch and Railroad.
If this is for speed, then it's not the appropriate thing. The, the bus drivers already said they're going to have an issue and I think the fire department's already said they have concerns about roundabouts. But again, those streets aren't intersecting. If you go to Fruitland, they actually look at high-pack volume areas that actually cross each other and those areas don't cross each other. So a Roundabout's made to go ahead and move the traffic all the way around because of this. But if you want to go ahead and do speed, you go ahead and look at speed cameras. You go ahead, now they have more officers so you can go ahead and put them in that area. So it's engineering, but a Roundabout itself is not intended to slow people down. If you go ahead and look at every Roundabout in Salisbury, they'll tell you the reason why. And you'll see high-volume areas with intersections because they've actually had accidents or issues there. If you go to that actual intersection we're talking about, it's not really intersection because you have one street going this way, another street going this way, another street coming this way. So your Roundabout will not only have, generally you only have four places to go. In that area, you're going to have like five.
Four.
You got Railroad, Railroad Extended, you have Schofield, Bay Street and Flower Street.
There's about Branch.
Oh, and Branch.
It's a very tricky intersection, but I think that overall it will help. It's a very tricky intersection, but I think that overall it will help accomplish some of those goals. As well as some revitalization efforts that we're working to try and do around the community center.
I don't know, that was a hard one for me, just with the location of where this Roundabout is going and what the traffic really, I mean, because really, truly, once they get through there, they're back up to, they're done again.
That's what it's there.
That's playing, that's what they're going to do.
Not ideal. Or the speed hump, not ideal.
I mean, I thought about the speed hump.
Thank you.
I have one more thing that I had done. That'll take me through the streets. Just like to talk about my employee group. Six of our eight employees have CDL license. We're operating four hundred thousand dollar trash trucks, two and three hundred thousand dollar trap, we have three trash trucks. We're all running, some of the other trash trucks are two and three hundred thousand dollars. We have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of backhoes, dump trucks. And we're heavy equipment operators, they're very skilled at their craft. We need to be, continue to be competitive wages for our employees to compete against private sector companies and other local municipalities. One last thing, the snowstorm. All these employees, the Town and Berlin employees, were all out all night clearing our streets. And we did that in a very timely manner, and our streets were probably some of the best in the, in the county.
Thank you. Any questions for Jimmy in reference to streets? All right, let's move on to economic and community development with our Director Iguell, page twenty-seven.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The, the mayor had asked if anyone wanted to do a PowerPoint presentation, so I guess I was the only one that did one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So many people don't realize what economic and, what the Economic and Community Development Department does for the Town of Berlin. I just wanted to give everyone a quick overview, I want to make this as quick as possible. So it's myself, Director of Economic and Community Development, and my Assistant Allison Early, who is part-time, works Monday through Thursday. And you go to the next slide. We are in charge of the county and state tourism. We represent the town with the Department of Commerce and Tourism. We run our enterprise zone, we run our opportunity zone, we belong to Maryland Economic Development Association. We are responsible for Keep America Beautiful designation, Business Development Grant, Grant. And I know Rondell's is here in the audience, we now have two hundred and fifty-three businesses in the Town of Berlin. Our department, yeah. Our department is also in charge of our Maryland Main Street Program and its designation. You can read the paragraph didn't show up on that. The program strives to strengthen the economic potential of Maryland's traditional main streets and neighborhoods. Designated Main Street Maryland communities have made a commitment to improve the economy, appearance, and image of their traditional downtown business districts. When you are a Maryland Main Street, you get to check that box off when you apply for grants, it pretty much bumps us up to the top of the list. But that involves costs, obviously. There's quarterly meetings, the National Main Street Conference is mandatory for our designation. We have to run events, with events comes advertising and marketing. We run our own website, berlinmainstreet.com. We have zero vacancies right now in the, in the downtown district. We work with all the property owners, we work with them extremely well. Responsible for the beautification of the downtown sustainability efforts, promotion of the Berlin, the Berlin facade grant from DHCD. We also run the Berlin Arts Entertainment District. Arts Entertainment District designation offers businesses, business tax incentives and other tools to encourage activity and investment in specific geographic areas where the arts are part of an economic development strategy. We try to include art and artists during all of our events. We promote local artists and musicians, comes with advertising. We promote and attract arts venues to try to come and open in town if, when there is a vacancy. We try to implement public art, that comes marketing. We also have to pay for the BMI license when we have live music events downtown. Our department is involved, or actually responsible for all the sponsorships the Town of Berlin does, for all the nonprofits out there. They come to us asking for raffle baskets, for golf tournaments. We sponsor the Memorial Day Parade, the Applebee Taylor Museum Events, other local nonprofits, I can't even get into the list, that is too long. We sponsor Taste of the Eastern Shore event that happens every year in Annapolis. Next slide is Welcome Center and Ambassador, do you have that one?
I, whatever order you say, I'm not sure.
Okay, the, we also run the Berlin Welcome Center and the Ambassador Program. And just to give you an idea of, we have a variety of volunteers, and the state of Maryland lists a volunteer is worth about twenty-five dollars per hour. So we save the Town of Berlin tremendous amount of money by including volunteers in the Welcome Center for our Ambassador Program. Obviously, we have to pay for utilities, phones, internet, we even have to pay for our own cleaning. We were cleaning the Welcome Center ourselves because several years ago, we, we were asked to make that cut in our budget. So we do clean the Welcome Center, but we do, we have to pay for that. If it's raining and it's muddy, people come into the Welcome Center and there's mud all over the floor, we have to get that cleaned up, and Allison and I are responsible for that. We do pay a cleaning service that comes in only twice a month. Let's see, we're responsible for, for all the displays of the Welcome Center, the decor, the supplies. We treat our volunteers to a reception for our ambassadors and our volunteers, storage landscaping. These are the designation. We maintain our rain gardens, kids' crafts at the farmer's market, we have a beekeeper at the farmer's market. We have to pay for informational signs, we buy native plants, it's a hundred dollars a year fee. The grants we have received in twenty twenty-one, so we received a strategic demolition grant for five hundred thousand dollars. Worcester County Arts Council grants worth four thousand dollars. Maryland State Arts Council grant fifteen thousand dollars. Main Street Improvement Grant, ten thousand dollars. Facade Improvement Grant for fifty thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars of that was used to pay for the town hall windows. Main Street Serial Grant, that's specifically designated for the businesses, we were just a pass-through, we received a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars for that. We receive a Worcester County Tourism Grant for forty-five hundred dollars. We just received the Keep Maryland Beautiful Grant for five thousand dollars. Currently working on, or waiting for results on the safety grant that we applied for, AARP Grant for benches, and another Maryland State Arts Council Grant. Now with that being said, these grants supplement the funding that we currently have in our budget. This is not in place of, if we didn't have this grant funding, our department would be over budget every single year. So we do really make the effort to apply for additional grant in order to be able to, to run our department.
Can I pause, can I pause you on that?
Sure.
Last slide. So you mentioned the Main Street designation, and without that designation, we probably would not have gotten that hundred ninety-four thousand dollars for our businesses.
That was only available for the Main Street designated communities, that's correct, Mayor. So I just wanted to, to make sure that everyone knew that. And now we get into our events. I haven't even mentioned events, what's included in that. Here's some pictures of our, what we do for the town, it's quality of life. The Berlin Farmer's Market, it's on Sundays, that requires overtime. We do receive two hundred twenty-five dollars per vendor and farmer each season. We have a Sunday staff, which includes a market manager, police, public works, all departments, we all work with each other. Each department depends on each other toward these events. It's not just my department, it's all of us. We have to advertise for the events, we have live music, marketing. There's some pictures of the farmer's market. Berlin Christmas Parade, we receive just a little over two thousand dollars in donations and twelve hundred dollars worth of entry fees. The Berlin Christmas Parade, it requires the entire staff to, to work and volunteer their time for that, plus the UMBS baseball team. We have to pay for advertising, there's a worklex for over eight hundred ten dollars. We also pay for the band buses for six hundred dollars. The emcee and judges, it's two hundred dollars, the band judges are four hundred and seventy-five dollars, they come all the way down from Pennsylvania. This year, we used local Iron Skillet Coffee for ten, that was a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Snacks for twenty-five dollars, and plus there's the marketing with the signs and the banners for that. All of the Christmas events and decor come out of our department. We were very fortunate to have Crinkle Cottage donated this year. Santa visits, the tree lighting event staff, you can see what that involves, the advertising for that. The carriage ride, six hundred dollars a day, it's thirty-six hundred dollars total. Tree and decor, the tree is going up to four hundred dollars in cost this year, plus the marketing and everything that's involved with that. Ice Ice Berlin, which is the same note as the tree lighting. Each of those ice sculptures is sponsored by the Merchants of Berlin. So each merchant pays two hundred dollars and they, they fund that event, which is, we wouldn't have that event without the merchants in downtown. But we do have to staff it, we do have to advertise, we do have to have some music. If we want an ice sculpting demo, it's an additional thousand dollars, plus obviously the marketing, the banners, and the map layout that we hand out. Our small town of forty-five hundred puts on two New Year's Eve events. We have Kids' New Year's Eve event from five to around six-thirty. We treat the kids to cowbells every year. We only have to staff a two-hour event for that, plus we, for advertising and marketing. Last year, we were going to put on a laser show, that's fifteen hundred dollar charge. At ten PM, we put on the Adult New Year's Eve event. Now, mind you, that the, the employees that work the earlier event have to wait for ten PM for the next event. So that's, it comes down to an eight-hour event, plus the advertising and marketing. We do partner events, the Old Town Throwdown, it's sponsored by Tom Fager and the Atlantic Hotel. We need staff to work that, but we don't, my department does not pay for anything for that. Or Reggae Play Day, that's sponsored by Ocean Ninety-eight. But they're obviously not my department, but the other departments do have to staff those events. I do like to give a shout out to the Berlin Chamber of Commerce. They hold the beer and wine permit for these events, and they always make a very nice substantial donation to the town. The last two years, because of no event, there hasn't been a donation to the town, but they usually do make, make a very nice donation to the town. Oktoberfest Fall Sidewalk Sale, the, we have two band sponsors. Burley Oak sponsors the German-style band, and the Starling Tavern sponsors the, the rock band at the other end of the street. We do need staff to work it, we pay for the children's entertainment, Scales to Tails and that sort of thing. Also, Ocean Downs Casino always donates their shuttle bus from BIS to town, so we always thank Ocean Downs Casino for that. Obviously, there's advertising and marketing that goes for each of these events. Justice here, Take Pride in Berlin Week, so we've been hurriedly rushing that for next month, and, and you can see what's all involved on that according to the, the slide. Fireworks, that's a ten thousand dollar cost for our department. This year, I, I think that the mayor is going to talk about a sponsorship to, for fireworks to be paid for, half of it to be paid for by sponsors. And the, the one thing I'd like to say about the difference between the town paying for fireworks versus sponsors is, right now, I don't pay for any advertising, or there's no event with fireworks. But if we were to do a sponsorship, there's certain incentives that go along with sponsorships. So we would have to start running ads so we can include those logos in the ads. We would have to order banners and marketing materials because if there's going to be a sponsor, there would be additional costs involved in that, and that's why I have the, the question marks there. And then I saved the best for last, and I wrote something that I wanted to share with all the employees here that I don't think they've heard enough lately, so I wanted to be able to, to say this to, to my work family. I respect all of the work that you do. I see it every day. I see Willie, Willie getting out of his truck to fix the trash can that blew over from across my house. I see Marvin covered in mud just to get the job done. I see Tommy smiling as he stands outside in the brutal heat. Slow, go, slow, stop. I see Sergeant Merle dancing during the bathtub races, showing the kids that police officers are awesome and fun. I see Jamie helping with all those lights, and especially with the Christmas parade, he's the biggest help in the Christmas parade of anybody. I see Alan and Caleb building a sleigh because I asked them for a favor. I see Augie dressing up as Rudolph, accidentally putting his costume on backwards. Rudolph, the tail goes at the back. I was advised to not put that picture up there. Allison and I could not do what we do without all of you. I could go on, but I think everybody gets the drift here. Over the past seven and a half years that I have been here, I have seen employees go way above what they have to do, and it's because of the way that we've always been treated as employees. No way we compare ourselves to any other town. What makes Berlin special is that we are not like any other, like every other town. From our residents to businesses, employees, and local government, we are Berlin, and everyone else wants to be like us. Thank you to everybody for always going above and beyond every single time. And I didn't go through line by line because you can see that, I'm sure you've been looking at it for months, if you have any questions.
I do want to go back to one of your slides if you don't mind.
Sure.
Where you're talking about, let's take fireworks first, and then I'd like to revisit your comments about New Year's Eve. So we're working on page twenty-seven and looking at expenditure, oh, one, fifty-four hundred, fifty-two hundred, contracted services. So the fireworks is a ten thousand dollar expenditure. In years past, and I'm going back a couple of years, Councilmember Burrell and Purnell will remember this, we did have some, and much of our staff will too, we did have a point at which we did fundraise for offering those expenditures or sponsorships.
What we did was, it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily a fundraiser, it was Burley Oak offered to sell cups, and the, the proceeds from those cups helped offset the cost for the fireworks.
And then during our meetings, we discussed the ability to possibly do that for some other events, like possibly doing that for fireworks and finding a way to do sponsorships. And then also, you identified New Year's Eve as, and you hinted on that also in your presentation, which I thank you for doing. The fact that that is a very labor-intensive event. And with that being said, it's labor-intensive on a holiday, which costs the town a substantial amount.
Correct.
And you, I believe, and some of the council members as well during the meeting, discussed the idea of possibly fundraising or selling sponsorships to, to help manage some of that cost, or adjusting the, the type of offering of events that we have. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure, sure, what I had suggested in our meeting, and Councilmember Nurr was there, was that...
I believe Councilmember Nichols also, right? We had two, didn't we? Or was it just one? Okay, my apologies.
Sure, one of the, one of the things that I had suggested was that we, when we first did the kids' ball drop, we didn't know what to expect, we didn't know who was going to show up. And now the kids' ball drop is so much more popular than the midnight ball drop, and it sets Berlin apart as more of a family-oriented New Year's Eve event. We, I think Ceele and Lori designed the ball for us, and we drop it at six PM to coincide with the, with New Year's in Berlin, Germany, actually. And with COVID hitting last year, and we had to cancel the event last minute, and some of the businesses wanted to do their own. And I, you know, after thinking about that and going into tonight's budget, I thought, how wonderful it would be for the businesses to be able to hold their own New Year's Eve celebration. We could potentially close the road, and then they could, you know, we, we've got a lot of restaurants and bars downtown now. I don't think that we necessarily have to do a town-sponsored event, where if we let the hotel do an event, or the Globe, Starling Tavern, and they could, they could have their own event that they work together with instead of the town.
Or even a chamber-sponsored event where they're all working together, I don't know if I'm speaking too far, but...
Well, I mean, for the, for the New Year's Eve, for the midnight ball drop, you've got guys up there, Tim can attest to this, on the roof, and it's cold, I've been up there, it's cold up there, it's windy. there, it's cold up there, it's windy up there, and they're they're laying up there all night, ugh, waiting to drop this ball, and what we did for the kids' ball drop is we used a bucket truck.
Well, Ivy, have you have you have you floated this idea with the...
With the what?
With the businesses?
Well, obviously, you're the first writer of refusal.
Well, no, I'm just asking if is there, I mean, I think that's beneficial to the businesses if they can have their own, you know, whatever, your own crawl or whatever, or events, and it kind of eases up on the town.
Can we get an idea of what that would look like economically, reducing some of those overtime expenditures, what it would look like for the change in costs, and then also the perspective of the business community on whether they would be open to that?
Sure, I I think Jeff or Natalie or the other department heads may be able to assist you with that, because like I said, those costs, the staff costs, they don't come out of my department, that's for for each, you know, with Chief and Tim, for their their overtime costs for that, it's mostly, and then Jimmy, because when that, when midnight hits, that place is a, that's a, it's a mess out there, so then Jimmy's crew's got to, they have to clean that up.
Now, now, can we get a perspective of what that would look like? Natalie, can you work with the departments to figure out what the cost changes would be for the different departments?
We have tracked the expense, we have tracked in the past the cost for each individual events, so we have that.
I think the last time was like 2019 or something, right before COVID.
We know the man hours.
So we know how that...
We know the man hours, so we just have to adjust the salaries.
And adjust it also for running just maybe the, if I'm hearing you correctly, the kids' ball drop, and then some staff would be reduced from that, but you would still have some expenditure there. Good idea. And if you don't mind following up with the businesses, just to get their perspective and then sharing that with us.
Tell me, you said 200, and how many business licenses?
253.
Wow. Of those, how many are located downtown?
Close to 100.
And then, I believe that you mentioned in your presentation, the national travel. Last year, we did not fund that, this year, it is in your budget request, if you don't mind just hitting on that and why it's important for the Main Street designation.
Sure, we receive something, an MOU between Department of Housing and Community Development, who runs the Maryland Main Street Program and the town, and it lists a variety of things that we have to do in order to maintain our designation, and one of them is mandatory attendance at the National Main Street Conference. Many of the ideas that I implement in the town, I actually get from the conference. I've been attending that conference since 2007.
Thank you. And that expenditure is seen on page 28, line item 01, $5,400, $5,200.
This past year, I included, when I let them know that it was going to be cut from the budget last year, they said to apply for grant funding for it for this year, and they they gave me the grant funding to go to it for this year, but Tom K recommended that, I couldn't do that every year, the town had to take some responsibility in that.
Thank you. And you'll also see the laptops on page 29, under, the budget code is over on page 28 down at the bottom, 01, $5,400, $5,700, and it's also the laptops, because we are trying to get to that ability to have the laptops, the desktop.
Right, I, the laptop I have right now, and Mary and I had this discussion with Cards, is I'm perfectly fine with my laptop, I didn't know, I don't know why I need another laptop, but Cards recommended it, so...
It's because it's like most of the equipment that we have, it's moving out of warranty. So if something goes wrong with it, you know, it's a, it's a precautionary thing, you can let it go, and it goes out of warranty, something goes wrong, and then you have to deal with it in your budget, or you can go ahead and replace it, knowing that the warranty is...
And we we had a discussion last year, I think, about that, and what we noticed with some departments is that they would keep the expenditure there, kind of test the limits of the laptop, and then if if they needed it, it was still there and available time. If you come back and you haven't utilized that lap during the next budget cycle, we're not going to penalize you for that, we'll actually say out of wood, but...
Right, myself and I think most of the other department heads, I think we're, we always have a surplus at the end of the year, so that's always good.
Thank you. Any, any questions? Yes, always good. Any questions for Economic and Community Development? All right, thank you again for the presentation, let's move on to planning, page 30. Dave Inglehart, our planning director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mine is always pretty basic. The big item is contracted services every year, that's page 30, the middle of the page, line 5,440, $5,200. And the bulk of mine is always the building inspections that we pay MDIA to do for us on our permits. They are generally more than covered by our permit fees. And one other addition down in that 5,440, $5,200, we put an intern in there for the summer this year. We had a young man with us last summer. We didn't have that much of an expense, it was less than that. That, I believe Jeff came out of administration last year, so we put it in my budget this year, with some hope to get some more GIS help. That's what the young man was from the Salisbury University, GIS and urban planning major he was, and we hope had the same kind of individual issues, great help to me and Carolyn, also to Megan Fowler, who's been doing a lot of our GIS stuff in Jamie's department. And towards the end of the summer, he was over working with Megan more than he was with me, Carolyn and our department. So we kind of lent him over there because he was getting more done for us and for the town as a whole. Another item we put in this year, which in past years, maybe going back five or six years ago, we had money into my my department budget for a townwide plan for growth, or strategic plan for growth, you see that down near the bottom of the first page, 5,440-5255. Jeff and I had discussed this. We had money in the budget several times, and then it would get taken out. This would be similar to the strategic plan that we put in place, I believe it was the year, calendar year 2017, that type of facilitated by an outside firm to gather public input about the town's future growth, what our need is, what our want is, because it seems to be a lot of varying opinions out there, that we stay right where we are, are we going to allow any future addictions, the expansion of or the modernization of the sewer system and the spray site? These are all big growth issues that we need to discuss. I'm not even sure that $20,000 would accomplish that. I gather that could be something that could come out of ARPA funds also. So those are the two biggest items in my budget, other than, you know, employee compensation at the very top.
Thank you. And just so that everybody is aware, when we originally had a department head request that $20,000 strategic plan for growth was coming out of general fund revenues, we have, for the basis of this discussion, as Dave put it, moved that expenditure to be covered tentatively under ARPA, but we'll have that conversation as well. Any questions for our planning director? Thank you, Dave. Let's see, up next is Parks and Recreation, Mary Bolden, our Deputy Town Administrator.
That's for last.
Yes.
This, the Parks budget remains relatively unchanged year-on-year, the biggest difference is in the capital outlay equipment, which as Natalie mentioned during the revenue discussion, I know is funded by a grant, should that grant be awarded. So that's something typically, I know, the final answer to that question before the budget is finally struck, so that may be updated by the time we get there, not that it will make that much difference in the overall budget.
Thank you. Any questions for our Deputy Town Administrator regarding Parks and Recreation? All right, up next is, Natalie, do you want to cover debt service bonds here and then more, since it's part of this?
It's pretty simple, we have several bonds, one of the largest one is the Heron Park finance land, so the annual bond principal for fiscal '23 is $184,085, and bond interest is $111 approximately per year for all the general funds.
Thank you. And then, just looking at page 34, if we, Natalie did cover the deficit at 100, or $280,107, I would say for the purposes of everybody like looking at what this figure could actually be, we do have the roundabout coming out of general fund revenues so far, the $122,000. Keep in mind that the recommendation would be to actually use impact fees for that, so I think we're looking more at a at a potential deficit at, as we see the budget now, at $158,107. So with that being said, I know that some of you have discussed some ideas about ways that we can maybe help flow that deficit, and I'd be anxious to hear those, if you don't mind. You think of whatever order?
I think you, do you have that? So I I use the 280 aside from that, now there's sitting, hearing everything tonight, there are some modifications to this, but this is just my my thoughts to this. I'm just going to go right down, and then I'll follow up at the end with some of the changes that I made, you know, sitting here. So looking at the cuts first, well, we're at a new budget, the revised was negative 280. So I'm going to go ahead and say that I am not going to take the cell phone, so there is $600. Admin, I talked about this last year, the 250 for Zoom. The conferences I'm going to get back to, so I'm going to skip, no offense, Natalie, I'm going to skip the two there in Finanz. Buildings and grounds, the 5,000, there is the 5,000 for the ceiling or 5,000 for the cameras, so we, this is all open for discussion, by the way, obviously. $40,000 for the Town Hall renovation, I would suggest that we turn that into ARPA, and instead of the renovation for this year, we use that for audiovisual equipment here for the chambers, which actually might bump it up to 45. Buildings and grounds, the maintenance software for 5,000, or I'm sorry, that's under Public Works, and the supervisor laptop...
Just slow it down a little bit, if you don't mind.
I need some more jelly bean.
A little less jelly bean.
Yeah. So, okay, do you want me to...
Nope, you're good tip off.
So, all right, so the 40,000 move to ARPA for AV.
Correct.
Public Works, 5,000 for the maintenance software.
Keep or recommend it?
This is this is all cuts right now, tentative, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, this is all discussion here.
Supervisor, the the laptop and the docking for the supervisor that we're looking to hire. All the streets totaling 257,000, 257,000, redirect to either Impact slash ARPA, which I'll get to. Remove the 3,000 snow blower. Economic development, I'm going to hold off on that because of information in your reports, so I'll follow up shortly. Planning, the 2,000 for the intern, and as you had discussed, Dave, moving the strategic plan to ARPA. So taking out the conferences, that cut is going to go down a little bit. The the fact that the National Main Street Conference is mandatory, I would include that back in, as well as the conferences for Finance, because if, you know, one group's going, other groups should go to the conferences too. So we moved out to ARPA, I talked about the Town Hall, audiovisual, the strategic planning, the 11,500 for police radios, 45 for the F250, and the 87,000 for the F550. So that, right now, is a total ARPA use of 208,500. The backhoe, I'm suggesting we use impact fees of 125. And these strike-through streets are not necessarily, excuse me, eliminations, they are just, I think we could have a discussion, since highway user revenue fees are lose or lose, recommend using for rails to trails in a event the county doesn't fund, or applicable other approved uses for HUR fee. So at the time, that left a surplus of 59,463. What I'm suggesting for salary was actually an idea that was presented to us via an email to do an even split instead of a cost of living adjustment. So what I'm suggesting is a 3% evenly split among the general fund staff, and you can see the numbers right there on the screen. So what that all did at the time was an ending budget amount of negative $17,412. I was recommending, suggesting, I should say, using the COVID funds that were currently in a stabilization account to cover that, leaving approximately $151,000 in that fund. This is from the $171,000 COVID money we received, I think it was the fall of 19 or 2020, somewhere around there. Now, the discussion tonight, the the adjustment to the laptop for the mayor, proposed adjustment to the laptop for the mayor's office, and the inclusion of conferences, I think changes this to about $22,000 that would need to be covered.
Can we take this back from the top, if you don't mind?
Sure. This is just suggestions.
No, that's, this is good, that's why we're here. And department heads chime in too, I mean, we're not, you all are the experts in some of these things. So the cell phones, I think it's plausible, like it was mentioned, I believe Ivy said it, I see a surplus coming back at the end of fiscal year '23 with some of those allowances, I believe Jay mentioned that as well. The Zoom license, the the complication there, I mean, some of it can be done through our existing 365, Microsoft 365, but the trouble comes is that some people are entrenched in Zoom, so they'll they'll want to meet via Zoom versus another platform. We do share, and and I think this came out of administration, sharing the Zoom license around as needed, so we've been able to make do on that respect.
And I'm not really horribly concerned about it.
No, no, no. No, I mean, but I'm, I'm just saying, I believe you said that you...
Lowing.
Right, but I mean, I wanted to hit on that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
The conferences you mentioned, now, the ceiling or the cameras? I see what you're saying, you're saying the ceiling for, I believe that's planning? Yep, and then the $5,000 for the cameras out of, was out of administration, right?
I believe so, yes.
And you're saying either or to one of those, I got you on that. And then you're saying the removal of the $40,000 expenditure for the vestibule down, vestibule? That's a hard word.
Entrance.
There we are, thank you. Well, it's easier. But I was going to try it. So removal of that, and I think you're correct, that the AV package, when we're looking at ARPA, and Natalie or Jeff can also chime in on this as well, there are a couple different avenues we can pursue with the ARPA allocation, and then there's one blanket one, which is revenue loss, and that's kind of an open-ended one, right? Because that's up to $10 million when the town's only getting shy of $5 million, so potentially that whole thing could be moved right over and used to cover revenue loss as as it's outlined in the final rule. So with that being said, some of these things may be directly attributable, I think it's important for us to try and hit those categories, but then I think it's also important, we've talked about some things here, whether it's bad debt expenditures, whether it's more people putting trash in the trash can, those little things add up, and to your point, Councilmember Horace, there there is $170,000 sitting there to cover some of those things, and we also missed out, so the way that was structured, I think it went through to October, right? And we were able to get some of that back in the expenses that we had that increased with trash, but then it hit a point where we could no longer get that out of this $170,000 grant, which is why I think the federal government did what they did with the ARPA rule, saying that if you've had that revenue loss or this loss that we're looking at here, there's a mechanism for applying that. But I think we need to be cognizant that some of this, right, we may allocate over a couple of years, because it may take some time for us to get our trash collection back down to what we're used to, or we may have to adjust to... collection back down to what we're used to, or we may have to adjust to a new normal. But we need to think about this a little bit longer than just this present fiscal year. So when, when we talk about that, I think that through the pursuit of some of those things, we could possibly look at, I mean, the increase in tipping fees were $56,000. We're looking at an F-250 at $45,000. So I think there are some ways that we can cover an increase and then also divert that revenue that was going to go to that increase to potentially an F-250 or some of the, I use the F-250, I'm saying some of the capital. But I think that these are some really good ideas. Dave, I support interns, I like interns, but I think this year we might have to look at trying to bring those on unpaid. The snow blower, I think that is missing already from this, right? That was cut? Or did I miss that in the budget?
It's still there.
It's still there? Okay. My fault. And then I see the point with the laptop for the supervisor, but I think that as we onboard that person, we do need to look through the fiscal year and maybe try to find a way to fund that. And then I think touching on the highway user revenues, right? It's important that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Natalie, that we allocate those things for, as Jack mentioned here, highway user revenue for rails to trails or pedestrian or street improvement. So you're headed in the right direction with that, but we do have to figure out where that goes.
And one thing I did, two other things I did want to mention real quick is this does keep the tax rate at 0.815, the current.
Thank you.
And, well, that's, yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So then, can we make sure, and the council has all of this, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So thank you.
It was sent out via, I didn't send it, it was.
Perfect. Thank you. The other thing is, I believe we have some, another alternative or possible suggestions as well?
All right. So in presenting this, my goal was simple, and that was to close the $280,000 deficit that this draft budget presents. And at the same time, cover the needs that the department heads requested and not have a tax increase for the residents this year. So I took a very simplistic approach. I'm putting forth, I'll get to the unrestricted reserves in a minute, but putting forth a 5% salary increase that would add an additional 131,000 to the budget. And that can be certainly up for discussion, whether we do less, more, we can discuss that. And then I'm moving certain things to ARPA funds, the police vehicle, the backhoe, the public works truck, and the dump truck. And that represents about 302,000 out of the budget to ARPA funds. And we can certainly look at moving additional money. But that's what I moved, and in order to balance it, I moved 109,000 from unrestricted funds to balance this out. We have in excess of a million dollars in unrestricted reserves. So we can definitely afford to do that. And I'm told by Natalie and Jeff, by the end of the year, that fund will continue to grow a little bit, so we'll have even more by the end of the year. So that balances that out. And also in last step with Jack relocating the 40,000 from the vestibule that they were going to put downstairs to a professional AV system.
What's that?
Is that where I was looking for?
To putting in a state of the art AV system to record these meetings and present items better. So again, real simple approach, but it does balance out.
Thank you. And I think, who put it nicely? Dave, you put it with the strategic plan for growth. I feel like the AV system has been the same thing for Mary over here, putting it in every three years only to have it removed. But I think this year.
The bill costs 40,000 anymore.
Yeah, I think, I think we're probably a little bit more than that. But I think that if there's ever a time that we're going to be able to achieve that, it's probably present day.
It's time.
Yeah, I think so. Way overdue. And it fits nicely, both of you, within the parameters of ARPA as it is because you're opening up public meetings. The, the other thing I will say is that, and Jamie and Tim, we have you both here for our enterprise funds, and I haven't seen your draft request, are you looking to replace F-150 at all? I know last year we had discussed potentially an F-150 for both admin groups. Is that?
Yeah, my, my truck has actually been cut out of the budget four years straight.
Right. Are you?
This would be the fourth year.
Are you, well, we haven't cut it. So don't dump the gun on that. So now, is that something you're requesting this year?
Yes.
So what's the condition of your truck?
I, it's got 110,000 miles on it. The truck, the seats are basically falling apart and they need to be reupholstered. Basically, it's the same vehicle I've had since the day I started here.
Mechanically and structurally?
Structurally, it's still sound. I mean, it's not rusted or parked or anything like that. It's just getting worn out.
It's rough around the edges?
Yes.
But it's not as rough as what we just saw in public works, right?
Actually, what I wanted to do with it is, is we have a utility bed truck that we use for like seasonal help, and then we use it for jobs, like say, for example, painting the puddles downtown. You have to carry paint around in it. So what my plan was is that truck sits most of the time. And that's the one we use if we think we're going to end up tearing a vehicle up or getting paint all over it, that type of thing. So we were going to get rid of that truck, take my truck, and replace that truck with that. But then I found out we had the issue with Casey's truck that we're dealing with now. He's got a F-1, Ford Ranger. It's like a 1996.
96, 97.
94.
I would say, I think it's.
Yes, 1994. What we found out is the fuel tank in that truck has a leak in it, and you cannot get a fuel tank. So what's going to end up happening now is that my truck gets replaced, my old truck will actually go to Casey because that truck only gets driven for me to read and to go to like classes and things like that, and it's all scary.
So repurposing that is something that's in the playbook?
Yes.
Just not moving it over to like.
That's correct. Because we found out we've got enough of the vehicle that needs to be replaced now.
Thank you.
How is the green, I think it's a green Ford Focus that Lawrence to drive? How's that be a good use?
That's, that's our department.
Okay.
Sits behind plenty most of the time.
Yeah, just it.
Well, we use it every week, but we don't use it every day.
I was just wondering.
So now with our department, so the objective, I think here, and there's a common theme, right? We all want to see something for our employee group. We do recognize that work. What that value is, we don't exactly know. Looking at some of these projected expenditures, is there any feedback in the adjustments by any of our department heads for ways? I know we've talked about some ideas about maybe fundraising or sponsorships for some of our events, maybe adjusting some of our event structures to be able to, and I say events, but it really impacts a lot of our departments, as well as some possible alternatives for, for being able to adjust some of these expenditures. Is there any feedback regarding any of that from any of our department heads?
Mayor, I'll speak, I'll speak for every department head that's in here. You all, obviously, you chime in. The, we go back, again, what, what has been said more than once to these folks, and I've been here long enough, I know these folks. And I've made very clear what you need, not what you want. And I can tell you hands down, from a capital perspective, the needs I've seen, I concur. And I applaud Jimmy, did a fantastic job sharing what the issues are. Tony Sullivan was not asked or planted here tonight. I took the opportunity, he operates the stuff, so you know, let him share. Arnold has, you know, expressed his concern with the vehicle. I mean, it's a good idea on one hand to look at something else, but the, but the reality is, I mean, Arnold's reasoning for the Tahoe is not because he wants a shiny new Tahoe. He's looking for something that is an officer's office on wheels, that's safe. And it's proved itself. I mean, he hit the nail on the head unfortunately when we talked about Sergeant Hunter. I am hard pressed to sit here with you in this council to tell you folks that there's something that can be cut.
And we're not, we're not necessarily saying cut. What we're saying is.
Or delaying.
No, no, we're not even saying that. We're saying, let's take a look at how we operate. Let's have some good discussions about ways that maybe we could take a fresh look at something, maybe adjust the way that we're operating, or different revenue streams, or ways to accomplish the same result, right? Like, I hate to harp on one thing, but we're talking about events, right? We're talking about a way to be able to accomplish New Year's Eve celebrations. It's not like we're saying we're not going to celebrate New Year's Eve. We're saying, how are we going to look at it a little bit differently to maybe cover some costs? So the only thing we're asking all of you to do, and the same thing we're asking ourselves to do, is to look at what are the intended things that we want to accomplish? And then is there a better way for us to be able to achieve those goals while still recognizing the fact that everybody's feeling the pressures that our economy has right this moment? And that's whether we go to the gas pump, whether we go to the grocery store, whatever the case may be. We're not immune to that. None of us in this room are, nobody out there that we represent or work for are immune from that. So what we're saying is collectively, how do we accomplish the things that we need to accomplish without passing any additional costs on that we may not have to pass on to our, to our taxpayers? So with that perspective, I really appreciate the views. I think that we have some, some further evaluation to do with the expenditures. I'd like to hear from the rest of the group with ways that we can accomplish some of these things and, and all of you too.
One thing I would say is, we have to go ahead and look at things that are actually taxing on us. And you said it, I think I said it, is events. I think we know and we plan what we have. We say 14 events is 14 events, but when you start moving in events, or it is a, I'm not going to say Chamber because Chamber does a lot of work, but if it is actually a private event for a group, any group, and then the next day it becomes an AV program, and then it becomes bigger and not just in a park, it becomes street closure, every one of these folks are actually coming out. For my guys, a lot of these things are on Saturday, a lot of these things are on Fridays, and these are times when they're actually often to being called in. Jimmy's already said, his guys are not trying to run in and get overtime. They'd rather go ahead and have time with their own people. And for, for us, if certain things become taxing, let the people. How much money do we get from events?
That's, that's a, that's a, that's a cost analysis kind of question. So obviously, it's a trickle down effect. And I hate to say that, but events bring people to town. People want to live in a town where we have a vibrant downtown. The cost of houses go up, in turn, taxes go up, town government gets more funding.
And I mean, we.
And it trickles.
It trickles.
It trickles if you go that way. But when you have the big event and you go ahead and don't have the sponsors, you go ahead and have the big folks that they're really making money on a big event, so, I mean, that's a whole lot of businesses don't have any skin in the game. They don't have any benefit. So you have one group of people really benefiting where the other group really doesn't benefit. But again, we love events. When you go ahead and say we're doing 12 in September and then you add more, that becomes an issue. And I think Ivy's actually said that time and time again. And she's at a point where she needs more manpower hours to get her job done.
So we're looking at events, since we're talking events. And I hear what you're saying, Chief, about the number of events and then the outside sources that are quote unquote partnering with or sponsoring these events. But I, I hear that when we do these things, there's no upfront fee associated with making these events happen, right?
For those partner events? You mean the Reggae Play Day, that's completely sponsored by Ocean 98 and.
So they cover the cost for everything for that?
They cover the cost for the entertainment for that.
Not for employees.
Not for employees.
None of these events are.
But what happens is the Berlin Chamber of Commerce, they hold the alcohol permit for all of our downtown events, and then they make a donation back to the town for the town to use for those additional costs.
So not to put those guys on the spot, and I don't want to know the donation amount, but when those donations are made, do they help to offset the overtime cost? Tremendous, let me do that.
If you look at the revenue section of the, of the budget, you'll see a line item called Main Street Tourism, and that's where the vendor fees and the donations and the grant funding goes into.
During our meeting with Ivy, we discussed expanding that program and expanding just, not just fireworks, not just New Year's Eve. Those were, we don't want to, we don't want to chop off more than we can chew in one year. I think you start with the bigger ticket ones, which are fireworks and New Year's Eve, see how that goes. And then in FY '24, maybe we look at something a little bit more.
You're talking, sharing the costs, is that what you mean?
I'm saying that through sponsorships, that we don't.
And remember with, I didn't mean to interrupt you there.
No, I'm sorry.
With sponsorships, there comes an additional responsibility. There's active fundraising. There's money that you have to spend on tangible things in order to get people's logos. I mean, what are we offering for a sponsorship? Are we offering a, a link on a website? Are we offering a logo on a banner? Those events currently, I don't, I don't do any additional advertising for those. So with that, I would have to incur cost for that, while their sponsorship money's supposed to go towards the actual event.
We should not retain a profit from sponsorships. For the events that you advertise and run away to town, you can definitely participate and collect, but we are not retaining profit to distribute to the other fronts.
No, but you can also, with some of those costs, we could build that into the sponsorship itself so that hopefully we're ending up with something that's a net zero.
It's longer net zero, but that's ultimately not helping for the department, overtime, public works, trash pick-up.
And I don't want our events, and I do believe in sponsorships to an extent, but what I don't want to happen is for our events to become run by corporatocracy, to use a random word. Our events are meant for the residents of downtown Berlin, or the residents of Berlin. People love to get together, especially we noticed that during COVID. I mean, you, you all tell us what events you would like, and in order for us to be able to do the events that you want, the, these are the needs that I have to have in order to put on an amazing event that only Berlin can do. So I don't want it to become a, you know, IG Burton presents the fireworks. I want it to still keep that community, that small town. I don't want it to turn into, well, because IG Burton or Berlin over, another entity is spending all this money, then we have to cater to whatever they want to. And, and that, I think that's what happened a few years ago, and that's why I think we stopped that.
And I think that in the draft that we've been working on a little bit for fireworks, we've been cognizant of it. It's a good point to make and reiterate to folks, but I think that we are trying to capture that as well so that we don't lose the fact that the town of Berlin is hosting certain things in conjunction with some sponsors.
Right. And the letter that we use for the, for the Christmas parade, that letter's been on the books now for a decade at least, that there's no set amount, there's no sponsorship level per se. It say, hey, we're doing the Berlin Christmas parade, whatever you can donate, you know, please donate. And, you know, people send a variety, you'd be surprised. We get some pretty sizable donations for the Christmas parade and we send them a thank you letter and there's, there's nothing else involved in that. And I think if we tried something like that first, then, then maybe we could go down that route, that route, you know? That was what I had initially offered, and then I think you had sent back something with the, the sponsorship levels.
And we'll end up with some feedback in public meetings before anything's entered into a speculative discussion. I think it's important. Now.
I'd still like to hear from Shanika, Dean, and Troy regarding closing this budget gap.
I agree. And that's exactly where I was headed before we get into agenda item number seven. If there's any perspective from the other council members regarding ways we can close the, the budget gap, I'd appreciate it.
First, I wanted to talk about what has been presented this evening. And I just want to, to commend the department heads for, for doing a fantastic job with And I just want to commend the department heads for doing a fantastic job with what you have presented us with this evening. And I could tell by your presentations, by the numbers, that what your priorities are, your priorities were, that I feel, are delivering quality services to the citizens of the town of Berlin. By way of providing for your staff to, providing for your staff to be able to work safely and efficiently, and by providing them what they need. Someone said something about this budget that has been presented is not a budget of wants, it is a budget of needs. What you need to do your job, and what you need to do your job safely with a competent staff is what I think is important, and I think, you think that also. Now, we have presentations or items for consideration that will provide us, I feel, with what you need, balance our budget, and will not provide for a tax increase for our citizens. I think all of those are good, good things, but I also agree with the mayor. When he talks about the way we operate, or the way you operate, I think there are, I think there's room for improvement, I think there's room for greater efficiency and effectiveness, but the time is out of joint. That's, this is not the time, I feel, to have those discussions. We're going to be striking a budget at the end of this fiscal year. I think those type discussions that the mayor is talking about need to be an ongoing thing for the upcoming year. We can sit here and talk about events and sponsorships and all that kind of stuff, but that time is not now. That is for a later time. We have had recommendations from two council members, and I'm glad to see the ARPA funds being recommended for capital and not operation. I think you have, both of you gentlemen have presented splendid ideas, I feel, food for thought. And I'm just, I'm pleased. I'm pleased with your participation as a staff. I'm pleased with what the mayor has said about considering better ways of operation. I think this is an opportunity for the town of Berlin, this is an opportunity for the town of Berlin to get stuff, I'm not going to say things are wrong, but to get stuff, since we've all been making up words tonight anyway.
You don't create a town of Berlin, did you, Dave?
To get stuff writer. If you would allow, to get stuff writer. I really want to study what you two have presented, but I have a question. What you have presented, because it was in the budget, is that $124,000 increase for the fire department?
Yes. So, it pays for the two EMT.
That's all I have. Where I sit tonight, I feel good. I feel good that we have some options that's going to provide for what the town of Berlin needs and support our staff. I've heard over and over again, it shouldn't be done on the back of the employees, and I agree wholeheartedly that human resources are our greatest resource.
Thank you.
That's all I've got.
Councilmember Nichols, your pronoun?
First, say it.
I'll go. So, no one can follow Mr. Burrell and his eloquent, sweet speeches.
I'm glad you said say it.
Right, yeah. But what I will say is, we definitely, I think I can speak for me, and probably most of the fellows up here, we have lost some sleep trying to figure out how to make this work for everybody. And when I say everybody, I mean the staff as well as the citizens of the town of Berlin. Looking at both presentations that were presented by councilmembers, Oris and Ner, I'm pleased with them both. Minor changes I would make to one or two, to one, but I mean, I love them, I won't say love, I like them both. I like the fact that most of the important items, meaning the employees first and foremost, were not forgotten in anybody's plan. Secondly, there's no huge tax increase in here, because I know that citizens can't right now fathom such a thing. But at the same time, I do see many of the items that I know for sure, because I've written in these vehicles, that need to be replaced are still here. The idea of Tim still keeping his vehicles, we didn't even talk about that, but Tim keeping or his vehicle on the budget because another vehicle has surfaced, I think that that should remain too. So, that being said, I don't know if you were looking for me to say A or B.
No, no. We're just trying to gather. This is basically like putting stuff on the wall, and let's figure out how we can work through it.
Well, since we're talking, my thought is this, 5% sounds very, I like it. I like the 5%. I mean, I like any increase as far as I'm concerned, but the 5% being feasible, I like that option a little bit more than I do the 3%, only because it's 5%. I mean, it gives you guys more of a base to work with as far as your staff, as far as the employee group goes. And of course, most importantly, as far as the employee group goes, I say make it an even 5% across the board. Don't go with the 3% COLA, quote-unquote, but make it an even 5, as Oris had mentioned, just changing his number from 3 to 5. The strategic, strategic planning, well overdue. I think we must keep that, because we are dealing with growth in this town on a daily basis, regularly, and everyone's question is, where do we go from here? What are we going to do next? We are at a place where before we start to accept any more approvals on projects and whatnot, larger housing developments or whatever they may be, I think that we definitely need to look into doing that strategic growth plan to see what it is that we truly want for this town. So, I know that $20,000 right now seems like a drop in the bucket, but I think that that's a line item that we should definitely consider keeping. I don't know what the final cost is going to be, but that needs to be kept, because it will ultimately affect every department in this building, the possible verbiage or whatever comes out of that, excuse me, out of that study. It's going to affect, of course, wastewater, infrastructure, everybody. So, I think that that's a must-keep.
Thank you. I think the one thing, and it's an important distinction to make, you'll probably see that growth component and the strategic planning component separated out into two different things. And one's going to be like a community-led discussion, or well, a facilitator-led discussion with the community and stakeholders regarding growth, right? And then another one is, to Dave's point, our strategic plan is outdated. It was in the budget last year, we cut it, we said, hey, look, we need to come back and revisit that. It's not in this budget, because I think ARPA fits nicely for some of those things, especially because we are coming out of a pandemic recovery. So, you will see probably those two items separated out, and maybe a cost change a little bit with that, but I think we can still accomplish the same goals. Thank you for your feedback. Councilmember, pronoun?
Looking over both these, I like J's, that's a lot simpler.
And we can keep zooms.
We're not going to cut to $200, so we need that. And we need a lot more stuff, and I'm going along with it. For one thing, I'd like to see the salary increase be 10%. It's about $120,000 difference. I think if we find it in here by either paying for more things, the ARPA funds, but we got it, one thing we're kind of missing, we're getting ARPA fund, we got $4 million, that was from heaven. I mean, so, we got to start thinking ahead about the police vehicle, tobacco, this stuff, if it's got a useful life of 10 years, you better start putting that money again away with inflation. And I'm sorry to say it, but it means a tax increase, guys. You're going to run into it worse a few years down the road. Getting $302,000 thrown into here from the federal government is a great thing, but it's not reality. It's not going to continue to be that way the rest of Berlin's life. You better start putting some money away to pay for this stuff. Factoring in a pay increase every single year, like I think we all said we were going to do last year, we've got to do that. And if you don't, you're just going to get further and further behind, you're going to end up with a 10% tax increase down the road from then. So, I'll go along with this on 10%, is what I'd like to see.
Troy said something that, the salary and salary increases, I think, need to be an issue of policy. Observation, I made it. When I asked Dave Fitzgerald, the fire department guy, about their salary increases, and it was not an issue. He knew what it was. 3% cost of living and a 5%, step. I would like to see the town of Berlin move in that direction. So, when it comes to budget times, when Arnold is in negotiation with individuals for employment, or Tim is in negotiation, or Jamie, or Jimmy Charles, then would have another tool to say, at least, your salary increase would be this, this is your cost of living, and this is your step. And something like that needs to be our policy. So, we won't have to go through these discussions every budget time, and I think it would put us in a far better place. Because Troy said, if we don't do something like this this year, we have this.
Blessing.
This blessing, this blessing. But we don't have to be in this position again next year.
And I think.
We really don't.
And we discussed a little bit of this last year, too, of the idea, and we keep hearing it time to time again, right? Everybody comes up and they say a step plus, right? But we have no steps.
Why not?
Because that's a good question.
Why aren't there any steps here?
And Troy mentions.
Can someone tell me that, please?
And Troy mentions the idea of planning long-term, right? So, there's a way that you can do that, and that's through an idea of what those steps would look like at different intervals. And to your point, what you're saying is that when you're onboarding an employee, right now, it's like, it's a coin toss. You don't know what you're going to get next fiscal year, but to have that defined, I think, what's that?
We're going to go behind.
Well, I mean.
Historically, we've gone backwards.
Yeah, but to get that on paper, to say, this is what it looks like, this is what the.
Program.
Right. It's part of a conversation.
But it ends the process every year, and then the yard is empty.
No, but the town did it before.
Yeah.
We had a step system.
But why do you not have it? Somewhere, somewhere, somewhere along the line, it got lost in one of these budget discussions. But we have, now, this is what I, we have folks on staff current that can do the research, that can make their recommendation, and we can come up with, that's not for us to do, by the way, we could come up with a step and grade system. All we have to do is charge Kelsey with that responsibility, and I bet you, a dollar could done it all, she would present us with something that is beyond our wildest dream.
Well, there's plenty of resources out there. I said, there's plenty of resources out there, and I was just going to make a point like to you saying that that got lost somewhere in the budget process. It's just like things like, I know it may sound silly, but three, four years ago, VJ's and Sam's Club came out. And that is in our handbook, and now, that is not, that's something that when I bring the handbook changes to you guys, that will be coming up, but there was never a policy change, it just came out and never back. And there's a few things like that.
Can you help us with looking at what it would take to implement a step system?
Yeah, I mean, I can easily get versions from.
Step and grade system, it went away with the town of Berlin about two years before I started working here. And my, from an HR global perspective, it's one of those things that always falls on the sword, and what do I mean by that?
You get.
No, organizations establish that in good faith. It costs money.
Yes, it does.
Okay? And then what happens is you get a sour year, and you say, okay, we're not going to do it this year. But you've established it for the employee group. Now, you got employees doing this, why? And then the explanation is, because we don't have the money this year. And then what happened here with the town of Berlin, the following year was another not-so-good year, and then it went away.
Dave said, and one of his recommendations is that the department heads are assigned vehicles. And somewhere along the line, Dave said he was still waiting for one last year.
So, the thing is, is that, I think through the establishment of the step and grade system, it's not saying that something is set in stone. To your point, there are some years where, I'm not going to sit here and feed anybody happy thoughts that may not always come to fruition. If it came down to a decision to furlough staff or to withhold a step or grade, I think we could all come together to realize that maybe that's the best way to do that. I don't think we're in that position right now. And I think that if we're going to look at having a retention package that's appealable to people, a way to financially plan, we discussed it, let's see what Kelsey and administration can come up with as far as a step and grade system. And I think it might be a good time with the amendments that we're making to the handbook.
To Kelsey for something before it.
No, I mean, I think for this, I think for this fiscal year, we're looking at an option.
I was saying.
But I would say before, before we look at FY '24, I think we could have a decent thought as to what we're looking at.
Yes. I came from state and county, and we always could guarantee at least the step, and then the COLA was always on top of that. It was, it was nice to know that you could always rely on something.
Yeah.
Well, at least you knew what it looked like on paper.
Yes.
Because I'll tell you this, West Virginia Public Schools, we are, we do step and grade, but there were years, now, mind you, right now, things are really nice, and I thank those commissioners from that seat, on that, in that job that I had, but there were years, a while back, I'd say at least 10 or 15 years ago, where we were not getting our steps, because the commissioners at that time weren't giving it to us. So, we knew where we were, we knew what we should have got. We knew what we should have gotten, but we did not get it. But eventually...
2008 when it downturned.
Say that again.
2008, only year we did anything all close.
Exactly.
When you don't get a cost of living adjustment ever, we never get one. Forget a step. We have never gotten a cost of living adjustment. So and usually the county, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they get, it'll be 1.5 or 1.8, 1.9...
2.5 this year.
2.5 cost of living adjustment. When we get zero and the cost of living that year is determined to be 2.5, we're negative 2.5. And the next year, when we get three, we're only 0.5 ahead. And that's why the letter that we all sent to you all points that out. Over a 10-year period, we're less than 1/10 of 1% ahead of the cost of living. And...
I think the important thing is...
That's ridiculous. And we're never in the process. This year, we got in the process. We took a budget and we all agreed. We're going to put 10% because historically, we looked at the facts. And we have been commended by all of you for our performance and previous mayors and councils. A cost of living increase, if you look at the most basic college business 101 textbook, is to just keep your employees whole. A raise or a step program is to reward them. We get rewarded verbally by you all the time. Thank you and the press. But we're always painted that, well, they need a point and a half on the tax rate. One and a half cents because they want, we're going to give them a 1.5% raise we got last year. That was real unfortunate because what that did was say that 1.5 cents equaled up to the employees getting what we thought was a ridiculous 1.5% increase after 5.9 inflation in 2020 and 7.2, 7.3 inflation. We're behind by half a year on what we could afford a year and a half ago. And I know everybody agrees with me and I'm probably putting my head on the chopping block. But we're never included in that process till this year. We have to wait to the end. I wonder if we get anything. And we get to the end and the cookie jar, I put it to you that way, is empty. And all we got to do was stand around and hope. You need some kind of set aside of this nature every year. The 200, the 300, the $400,000, you might need... Even if we grow more, we're going to have more staff. It's only going to get worse, as Troy's saying. If you don't start thinking of that, like you did the enterprise funds, the utility funds. You guys did a great job. We've created reserve. We started saving our money for the future. You started. You got to do it for the employees.
And hold on one second. Can I get a crap? The thing is, Dave, I hear you and I think we all hear you, right? And I can hear the frustration in your voice. We all read the letter. We hear you, right? We have that hard job, just like all of you do, right? What do we balance to make everything work? And I understand the frustration and I see it in all of you. But we want to do better, right? We want to make the process better. We want to make it so that you're not at the end of the line saying, what are we going to get, right? But I think that it's going to take us putting our heads together on a step and grade system, something that we can plan for, right? And I think that's what I'm hearing from you, is something that is forward thinking, right? Now, is it going to cover everything every year? Probably not. We'll have to do our COLAs and things like that. But it shouldn't be this thing that you wait 10 years and it's like, maybe I get the crumbs. But do I think that it's going to be 10% this year? I'm sorry, it's not. That's a high expectation.
At this point, you haven't decided that.
I understand.
You're unilaterally deciding that. With this thing that came out, it says, it doesn't say what the 125 extra you gave to the fire department costs on top of the 81 and a half cents current real estate rate. Doesn't, does not say that. But it says what the greedy employees will cost 9 cents on top of the 81.5 because they want 10%. That's what it leads people to believe.
First, I think you need to know that we don't ever see any of you as greedy. And we hear what you're saying.
I'm saying what the public perception is and it was last year. I can tell you because it was put that way to me myself, face to face. You cost me a point and a half on my real estate taxes.
That's what the fire department costs.
And I reached my pocket, I said, here, $5.
It's okay. And that's okay because that's what it costs. You know, I...
I'm saying I took the bait. I'm just saying, after someone said that.
Don't argue with me. Dave?
I'm not arguing with you.
Sure sounds like it. I'm agreeing with you. So I don't need a rebuttal. I agree with you. You guys got a one and a half last year. You've been backwards. We've had this discussion, holding the tax rate right where it is. It sure sounds great, but it is going backwards. We can make it work this year because of the ARPA funds, because of a couple other really good years. But you can't do it forever. And sooner or later, everybody will realize the tax rate needs to go up. It's going to happen because every year you don't do it, you're going backwards. Because there's needs we got out there that are millions. And we got to start putting some money away for it. We agree.
Mayor, council, employees, this is the first time I have presented for you a discussion on balanced budget. This budget, this draft that you have in front of you has a deficit. I have not been employed by the town of Berlin and presented unbalanced deficit budget in front of you. Let's just step aside from increases of employees. Every single year, we have discussed and I have asked you to look for the future, to look for the future what needed. ARPA money, great, we get this opportunity to fund certain capital projects in place. The personnel cost, the most valuable asset for the town is employees. You all agreed and we all agreed up here. If they will not be here, we will not run this down. We're talking about exploring the ideas, how to operate more efficiently, less expensive. That's all great. But along the side, we have infrastructure that is aging every year. We have growth that requires more employees and more services. The cost, this draft is presented with no personnel increase and it's not balanced. To operate the town, we need to have extra revenues to put in place to close this gap. Applying the ARPA money, yes, it's a great idea. What's going to happen next five years in the road? We're going to sit next year in the same situation where we're going to discuss if we're not going to increase the rates for taxes, if we're not going to find other sources for the revenues. We're going to face the same problem. ARPA is going to run out soon or later. Then what?
It'll be sooner. We've got some fixed.
So allocating the funds, it's a good idea. While we have this opportunity, the tax increase must be in place if we can set aside some for future capital projects. So we have a plan five years down the road and we have that capital reserve. And we have reserves to fund the personnel cost. I think our meeting is going to be in two hours and not four hours. Because we will have that opportunity to apply what we have and what needed. I hear and understand that working on a budget together with the department head and look at their department requests and see what possibly could be eliminated or do better. But then at the same time, I'm looking around, Ivy did a great presentation. We're growing. We just added an extra event, Memorial Day Parade. We're looking at...
We didn't add that. We did not add that.
It's always been there.
It's increase, my understanding, it's increase in the participation and involvement from the town.
Not yet.
Potentially for FY '23.
Right. And that was my point, that we cannot add any more events.
And then we're looking at improving security, the doors. From the edge of the building, this whole building needs to be remodeled. So everything is common in place year after year after year. If we're going to rely on ARPA only and we're going to just say, we're going to buy this truck or we're going to push this truck down the road to another department, we're going to be in the same situation next year.
My turn. Yes, sir. I wasn't going to take it either.
I want to, something Dave said really, really bothered me. And I don't want any department head to think because you share your opinion, because you share your concerns, because you may have a different opinion than anyone up here, that your head will be on the chopping block. Because that is not the way to operate. And folks are not free to speak their mind and to say what's on their mind in the workplace or anywhere... Or anywhere. That would be a place that I feel is not worth working for. So by sharing, you can only make things better. Because no one of us thinks the same thing. And when I said that I agree with the mayor that we need to really take a good look at how we operate, I want you to understand that when I say that, I mean it totally. And sometimes when we take an assessment of ourselves, what we find is not what we necessarily like. But we need to take this honest look. And I'm saying that with this honest look of how we operate, sticking money up back or planning for the future, like Natalie has just expressed, and considering the tax increase that Troy has talked about, there's no one thing. But there is a group of things and a group of factors that will put us in a better place. That's what I believe. That's what I'm expecting to not be here again next year with this discussion.
Well, I thank you for that. I will say and I echo that nobody's head will ever be on a chopping block for speaking your mind. The only thing that I will say is that there's doing that respectfully, I think is the only thing to add to that. Which I don't think that anything you said is disrespectful, so don't take it that way. The other thing is that one area where we do disagree a little bit, I think that I'm very proud of us this evening, right? We still have one more item on our agenda and I don't, today's, I don't want to lose that. Well, it's item number seven. I do want to ask if there's any questions or anybody that needs any further explanation on that document that has been provided. If there isn't any, I didn't want to pass over that document. But I will say that I'm proud of us this evening because it is a challenge, right? We're running a municipality here that's got 5,000-plus people, that's got 70-plus employees. With that being said, there are times where we need to put our heads together and hear some different perspectives about where we need to go and how we're going to get there. So I'm very glad at what we did. Natalie, I understand and I respect your thought about not putting forward an unbalanced budget, but we haven't done that and don't think that you failed in this process because we don't introduce a budget until May 9. So with this being said, this is really just a work session by design, right? And I think we've done a lot of work tonight. Everybody has done a lot of work tonight. It's 9 o'clock at night. So thank you for that. I don't know if there are any closing comments or any questions about item number seven.
Can I just make one comment? I know I can only speak for myself, but judging on the looks on everyone's faces when this came up, to hear the fire company say, you know, we received the 3% and then the 3 to 5. And then we said, what'd you get last year? And they said, well, we did the same thing last year. I could see all of the employees kind of look at each other like, okay, funding that, you know? Or helping to fund that. So I really think, and they deserve it. I'm not saying that they don't need increases too, but I think it's just something to put things a little bit of perspective. Because I could see everyone do a glance around like, okay. But I just wanted to point that out.
I should observe it because I thought I saw that too.
And I think we do need to talk a little bit for the item seven, since my name is standing next to it. This spreadsheet has been prepared with, do you want it up?
Yeah, put it up, seriously. It's an agenda. So if there's, please provide some context and any more questions.
Sorry, I have a lot of, I think that's one I did. Do you remember what it...
General Fire Company's increased projections.
Nope, sorry.
I think it's the second one.
The second one is one I did. And that was just averaging them out if that's the course you decided to take.
So I have been asked to prepare, this was requested, to compare the increases to the taxes. My initial suggestion was not to prepare this in the way it is. Because when you look at the 280 in perspective of the deficit, including the allocation to the fire company, it doesn't really give you the true number or comparison to the tax. Nor do I agree that the salary increases should be compared to tax increase in the increment because it's not compatible to each other. It's a combination of everything. The tax increase does not affect the salary salaries. And I just wanted to say that because that, what Dave said, it was there in the public. The perspective of because we get increase, that's why the tax goes up. So this was published with the agenda and went to public for review. The tax rate next to it to cover the deficit, including the fire company, then this is above the deficit. But I think there are a combination of things, as was discussed tonight, to close the deficit. And there is additional sources that we can look at without doing this projections in place.
I'm not proposing 90%.
Any questions regarding item number seven or the table that's in front of us?
I'm not proposing 90% tax rate. Don't think that. I'm proposing 10% increase.
We agree. I'm not liking a 90% tax increase. No.
So what I'm going to ask, I guess, is normally after the budget work session or at the budget work session, I'll have notes or suggestions that I would go back to my office and start working with the departments. And we would implement the suggested items that have been discussed or go with the revenue projections that have been discussed. As of right now, I don't have any of your asks.
Much wish would you take J's?
No.
That would be my idea.
What I would like to do is put our heads together with council member Orris and council member Nerr. I think we can find some common ground on those things and achieve some of those.
But she's looking for direction now.
I know. And I'm saying that I don't think we're going to have that tonight. Because I want to chew on both of your ideas. I'd like to talk to you a little bit more about ways that we can come together on those and what it looks like.
So are you planning according to that? Like, I mean, we have open meeting to consider. We can't just all send, how do you...
No. What I'm saying is I want to sit down with the two of you to discuss your ideas and see if there's a way we can come together on those, achieving some of the other feedback that we received this evening. And that still keeps us within the quorum, under the quorum level. And then with that being said, we'll provide some feedback back to the finance director and then get another draft of the budget for us all to look at. And then from there, we can have another work session if needed.
I thought we were supposed to have a...
Tax rate on Monday, next meeting.
It's meeting.
That's the direction I'm looking in.
I still think that's a little too early.
Just so, Claire, I agree with Troy. I would favor J's recommendation.
We have, right now, the tax rate can be set a week from today.
Right.
Yeah.
I still think that's a little early, but I'd like to have some conversation with the two of you. All right.
Do we want to change that now?
We can't. It's a work session, but...
Okay, so we'll still talk about it at the turning meeting.
Karen?
Yes.
How long ago did the talks about this roundabout go on?
How long ago did the talks about this roundabout go on in school field? How long ago did that start?
Well, that started, I'd say, it's been less than a year ago.
Okay, do they realize that we have tractor-trailers that deliver to our shop?
I'd like to talk offline with you about some things like that.
Just to let you know that they come down to here like every other day to get to our shop.
Let's talk offline about that, if you don't mind. We can come back and circle back around with that.
All right.
And it has been my understanding that roundabouts are not used to slow traffic down, but in fact, they're used to facilitate the movement of traffic, to keep traffic moving and not backing up.
I'd like to ask some more discussion about it, but thank you.
Do we need to adjourn?
I don't know. Do we need to adjourn?
Jay's not here.
We didn't compete, so...
Yeah.
I just think that's the end of our...
Just go home.
Yep, let's go. It's a work session. If we mess it up, we expect to, those are deserving, we gasped, tell us we're gonna do it correctly.
Dave will let us know.
They sent us an email. We all messed up.
Are you burrowing me?
Yeah.
Thank you both, I appreciate that. Also, well, hold on, I wanna talk to you both at this point.
What time I watch that?
10:30. I'm keeping it.